Called a what a, a regular session for October, October, yeah, Jesus. September fourteenth thousand twenty. We need a roll call on this?
Yes, we do.
No, I don't think, I don't think, like, we kid doesn't hurt, but I don't think we do.
Well, we did it in the past, so.
Yeah, but we don't know, we don't even.
Yeah, but it was executive session going into a adjourn, recessing into executive session coming back out.
Yeah, well, we, well, we have a, well, we have a regular meeting, we don't raise our hands for, to get going.
So open up the meeting.
I think we're good.
Yep.
Okay. Um, if you'd all join me for and rise for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America.
To the republic for which it stands.
Please remain standing for a moment of silence for all the men and women, past and present, who help protect us and our great country. And let's not leave out the healthcare heroes who stayed between us and the pandemic. Thank you very much, please be seated. Okay. At six thirty-three. We have a joint meeting with the planning board and the finance committee. Okay, Mr. McGinnis.
Sorry about that, I was muted. Um, so I can, I guess I could start, so you know, in preparation for town meeting next month, you know, we have our general schedule, a calendar that we put together with the clerk's office. So, you know, we're trying to, you know, stick to that calendar, but in a consolidated schedule, because there's, you know, a number of things going on related to COVID. Uh, I asked the planning board to have a joint meeting tonight to, uh, one, review the one article they'll have, that they've supported, a petition article, they can explain that on this, uh, town meeting warrant, and also for the two boards to discuss the vacancy. Um, and we can get into that, but there's, and how they want to go about, uh, presenting or identifying, uh, a candidate to fill the vacancy, because we've had, uh, as of today, three applicants who are interested. So, um, then after that, I'll just kind of, my plan was with the FinCom is just to talk about the budget schedule for this year, and some options that we'd like the two boards to discuss and agree on before we move forward with the budgeting, so. With that, I'll give it to, uh, our planning director, Christine O'Grady, to talk about the petitioned article.
Hello, everyone. This article came before you, or initially was going to come before you at the Springtown meeting, um, the applicant ended up withdrawing it to, uh, work with it further with the planning, um, board. So the article actually, as it stands right now, is to see if the town will vote to amend the Dartmouth zoning map by rezoning Assessor's Map fifty-six, Lot six, from single residence B district to general business district. The, um, the applicant and, um, their representatives are on this evening. They have worked with, um, Town Council Brian Cruz to develop a restrictive covenant, which will go along with this actual, um, with this actual proposal, um, that came in as a citizen's petition. That proposal, basically, the intent of it is if, for some reason, the, um, solar project that is proposed ultimately for this site does not go through, there are some protections to the town, um, and to the applicant as well, now that the, that the property would be rezoned. So this parcel, um, I don't know if all of you have seen it, but its location is, um, kind of tucked in in the back. It's, obviously, it fits up against the general business district quite nicely. Um, there's a lot of, uh, wet area on this particular parcel. There isn't good visibility from any of the main roads in that area, so that's one of the reasons why we would hate to ultimately see, you know, some type of a shopping center there or something like that, you know, it wouldn't behoove anybody to have that, but the, the planning board has worked with, again, the applicant, as far as the solar project is concerned. Um, it is on the planning board agenda tonight for, um, their public hearings, so they will be discussing it beginning at around seven o'clock. In the meantime, um, we're thinking since both boards are before, before the select board tonight, both the planning board and the finance committee, um, that we ultimately won't have to, uh, meet with the finance committee on Thursday night to discuss this particular article. So I'm not sure if the applicants are prepared to talk, or Town Council, I don't know what else you need to hear with regard to this.
Okay, any questions or comments from any of the groups? Sean, go ahead.
Yeah, what does the, uh, I guess this is more so to Attorney Cruz. Uh, what does the, um, covenant actually say and do?
Uh, so it, it does, the, the main thing it does is, uh, upon, but only upon, the zoning change, assuming it passes this upcoming town meeting. If, if it doesn't pass this town meeting, this, the Warren article, then this restricted covenant, even though it will be recorded, becomes ineffective. Uh, assuming the zoning change occurs, uh, what it does is limits, uh, the commercial industrial use of the property to certain itemized uses, particularly being solar farms, agricultural uses, stables, gardens, and landscaper yards. Uh, I put out that currently landscaper yard is already been allowed by zoning there anyway. Um, but the planning board felt that that would be fine if zoning eventually allowed it, to allow it as an exception of the covenant. So those would be the only commercial and industrial uses allowed. Uh, the restriction will last for ninety-nine years, uh, and would run with the land through different owners, and it would be specifically to the benefit of the, uh, almost abutting land, uh, owned by the selectmen as the town, uh, which constitutes the town forest. So, uh, the select board would be the enforcer of the restriction. Um, and for that reason, part of the Warren article as well, is an authorization by town meeting for the select board to be able to accept the benefits of and enforce the restriction. So that is, uh, that's in a nutshell. Um, there's some legalese involved as well, but, um, I'm happy to answer more questions, but that, that's the intent of what it would do, if that's your question.
So basically, it restricts the use of certain things, and that if, uh, the solar farm doesn't fall through, uh, they can't put in a strip mall or just put any kind of random business in there at all whatsoever.
Correct, their, their backups would basically be agricultural or landscaping related only.
Okay.
Mr. Mickelson.
Have we ever used this covenant before with any other solar farms in our town?
Uh, no, no, uh, there's never been a situation wherein, uh, there's been a zoning change proposed as part of it. Um, and I, I want to be clear in case there are any concerns that arise. Case law is clear that this type of situation is allowed, uh, where a covenant is proposed by the developer, recorded ahead of time, and then made contingent upon town meeting, uh, adopting a zoning change that they're requesting. Because, uh, the town has not directly agreed to the zoning change as part of the recording of the restriction, uh, it's not considered a quid pro quo for a zoning change. Town meeting still has every right to decide yes or no, uh, we're not binding them to anything. But in the event the town meeting independently chooses to adopt the zoning change, the developer is voluntarily limiting itself to the types of commercial industrial uses it would be able to do on the property through that zoning change.
Great, thank you.
Attorney Cruz, could you repeat what you said about the town forest? You, you made some reference to access to that.
No, I did not make any reference to access, and if that was implied, I apologize. The, the, in order for, uh, restrictions to run with the land past current owners, you need to have, uh, a benefiting parcel. So it can't just be the benefit of the town, it has to be the benefit of the town's land. And so you need to have some land nearby. There's no, um, non-conservation commission land that directly abuts this parcel. But there is the town forest, uh, that is owned directly by the town rather than the conservation commission, and that's within approximately a hundred feet or so. Um, and case law is clear that you don't have to have directly abutting land, you just have to have land that's close enough nearby that you can make an argument that it benefits the restriction. So in this case, the argument would be, you have the town forest, and you're preventing, uh, large-scale commercial entity from opening up, um, and, and developing a parcel within a hundred feet of the town forest, and that's why it would run with the land, and we could continue to enforce it against future owners, uh, of the solar farm property, assuming that's what happens in the future.
Thank you.
What questions? Comments? John, go ahead.
Do we know how much more solar Eversource can absorb before they have to make upgrades to their system?
I know nothing with respect to particulars of the solar industry, I apologize.
I can say, we can find that out, but it really depends on the location in town, so Eversource does not have, you know, uh, you know, just for Dartmouth, how much, it really depends on where the line is and what the distribution network is like, but in this area, we could contact them and ask them, unless the applicants know.
We've asked them before, they will not give you a straight answer.
Thank you.
Well, I am the applicant here, um, and I cannot give you a straightforward answer right now, because the utility itself doesn't know. Uh, we have been entered into a group study that is a large part of Eastern Mass surrounding Dartmouth, and they're currently doing a study on this project that is for the transmission level going through December, and there's also a separate distribution level study going through early spring, so we do not know, the utility does not know at this particular moment.
Mr. Chair, may I make a comment?
Sure.
Just as a planning board member, and I'm a relatively new one, so I certainly don't know everything, but I just want to say that for my part, when I voted in favor of this, as my colleagues, I think, also did, I feel like this particular applicant has done really good things, and that this restriction for the ninety-nine years, if that's what it were to come to, is very valuable and important to the town, this is, this is really a good thing, not a bad thing. The applicant has protected themselves in the event that it falls through, that's also perfectly fair. But I just want to say that I think this was done really well, and whatever we may or may not have done in the past with solar farms, this one, I think, is quite a good deal for the town, especially compared to the alternatives that could happen to this land if we don't do this. So I think this is really good, and it would be great if town meeting would approve it now and not later, so that in the event that Eversource ran out of capacity, we were in there first and taking advantage of what I think is a good deal for the town. So I support it, and I support the applicant's efforts in this thing, and I just wanted to make that comment.
Thank you very much. Mr. Talabon.
Um, I'm not sure, if I can make this question clear. It's my understanding that the town's availability of land to develop solar is, uh, becoming smaller all the time. And if so, this is becoming available because it's being, um, rezoned, so therefore it's, it can be developed in this way?
Uh, Ms. Travel, if, if the question is, um, could this be developed as a solar farm without the zoning change, the, the answer is no.
Uh, okay, but, okay, but the, but the, the reason why we can do this is because of this, of the change, because we, we are limiting ourselves across town as to how much solar development we can have. And this is being done because we're going to rezone, because we're attempting to rezone it, is that correct?
I do not know whether or not there are other properties available in town that would otherwise allow solar at the moment.
Well, maybe, but, but.
This was the proposal made by the, by the developer and the property owner, um, as a, as a petition. So this is not the planning board's independent proposal.
Okay.
Anyone else? Gloria?
For Attorney Cruz, will this set some kind of precedent going forward for other types of, um, rezoning?
I don't know if it'll set a precedent, um, in the sense of, this is something that's already allowed by case law, we're not creating this out of whole cloth. This has happened before, it hasn't happened in Dartmouth before, as far as I'm aware. Uh, but there's nothing to preclude, uh, landowner from possessing this, again, ultimately, it's up to town meeting what they want to do, which is the, again, the important thing to make sure that we aren't engaging in something that could be construed as, uh, improper, uh, zoning, is that we are not guaranteeing that they're going to get the zoning change. You typically see more of concern about that when the, um, when the entity that's negotiating the restriction also happens to be the entity that can, um, effectuate the rezoning, because it's a city council where they can just change zoning as they see fit. But as far as whether it sets a precedent, that, that's ultimately not a legal question, it's, it's a, it's a policy one. This is not something that we made up, and it's not something that couldn't have been proposed before. So whether you think it's a good idea or a bad idea, I'm, I'm really not gonna step into that, and I'm gonna let you guys decide that for yourselves. What I can say is, how this is being done is backed up by case law. And whether you want to do, do it or not, that, that's a decision you guys have to make and figure out whether or not you're worried about how it's going to be perceived in the future with future lands. I don't, I don't really want to get into that from my end.
Well, if it, if it did pass and go through, it certainly would be an example for a similar situation down the road.
Which would be a good thing, in my opinion.
Hopefully, yeah, if it's, with the way we perceive it's a good thing, sure, I agree. Mr. McGolden.
Well, um, getting back to Gloria's, uh, comment, whether or not it would set precedent, this is a citizen's petition. So this is the outcome of negotiations after a citizen's petition has been presented. So a citizen's petition can still come up on anywhere in town to rezone certain areas. So that, it's happened in the past and it'll happen in the future. This is just now a citizen's petition that's been, uh, looked at with a restriction, this is something a little bit different. So the way I'm looking at it now, and it's protecting, it's protecting the town, but more so, it's protecting the neighborhood.
Yeah, just, but speaking of that, does anyone know if the people that signed the petition are actually abutters, or?
No.
No, you don't know, or no, they're not?
No, I mean, I, I looked, that's the, one of the things I looked at. Um, Hillcrest, Elzwick, um, Reed Road, nobody on Crossroad. But I'm assuming because of where this is, is probably where, you know, the, the petitioners live, so it's their neighbors. But again, it's a citizen's petition, it doesn't say you have to be a citizen of the, uh, of the area where the land is going to be. That's, you know, it's just fifteen, fifteen citizens who file a petition to do something, they can be anywhere.
But I, I understand that, I was, I was only concerned because with issues we've had before with, with, uh, solar arrays and that sort of thing, it's always helpful if the abutters are, you know, in line with what's going to happen.
Lori Miller, can I say something, please?
Sure.
Um, I, several of the people who have signed that petition have approached me and said they are totally in favor of this, and they would rather see this than any type of commercial or any housing. Some of them do live close enough that they're really in favor of it.
Christine?
Um, the only other thing I would say to you is, again, I said the public hearing for the planning board is this evening, so the abutters all have been notified as part of that. They were noticed the last time, so i- if there is any discussion tonight, you know, we can let you know of that when we give you our, the planning board's formal recommendation.
Well, that's good, yep, thank you.
Can I, Lori Miller, can I continue with something?
Uh, sure, go ahead.
Um, they came before us before to do this, and, and, um, we told them we were unhappy with the way it was going, and we voted against it the last time. They've come back with us, and they've worked very strongly with our town council, they've worked with us. They've given us what we've asked for, um, and I think that is, uh, speaking very strongly of the developer. And, um, we got what we asked for, the ninety-nine years, the restrictions of what could be on that property. So I think we've covered the tech, excuse me, I think we've covered the town and protected it, um, the best way we can. And it's given the, um, the developer a little bit of leeway, that if in a year from now, if it should fail, he can do agricultural, which again would be phenomenal for that neighborhood.
Okay, thank you, family.
Yes, um, how, how large is this project?
It is going to be about a three-megawatt project, that's roughly fifteen acres, um, mostly limited just by the parcel size itself, the wetlands that are to the west of the property, and then property setbacks.
So, uh, yeah, I'm, I'm a solar farm guy, I'm, I've been, been in favor of it since the beginning, and in our town, uh, is the leader in the state in commercial solar farms. And I think considering where this, this project is located, and, and the, uh, in all that has to do with the legal, uh, legality of this, so I want to continue to be leaders in the solar farm business.
Sean.
I do have a suggestion to the planning board, that when they submit this article for town meeting, that a locust map be put involved, put where it is, because that was one of the questions from last time, um, that we were getting is, where is this? You know, where is the location of the property, so that would be the most important thing. Even if it's just a simple map saying, this is it. You know, in the overall picture, where it is, that speaks volumes.
That would be a good idea to put it in the packet.
Yeah, good idea, I agree.
As, and not only just this time, anytime in the future. Because that's the one thing we get from town meeting, with the planning board articles and with some other articles, is where's the property? What are we talking about? So people like this, people, people don't like to drive around looking for it, people just want to sit home and look at it.
I think it would be a good idea to put it in a packet, and not only that, to put up our lodge sign, our lodge maps that we used to put up at town meeting, remember those, Sean?
Yes, I do.
Okay, anyone else? David.
A quick question, procedural question, if there were going to be, uh, abutters who objected, uh, procedure, would you hear from them tonight during a planning board meeting?
Yes.
We'd hope so, because it's better now than to have something come out.
Yeah, for sure, okay.
No surprises.
I'm assuming the abutters were notified, correct?
Yes, I said they were, yeah. Okay, thank you.
Okay, anyone else? Did I see a hand in there, I guess not.
No, it was mine.
Okay. Okay, I guess.
Can I say something again? Have you, um, set a date for town meeting, because if you're going to do it on a Saturday again, a lot of people have to give a month's notice when they, um, they have to take a Saturday off.
That is on the agenda for later on this evening.
Okay, just, um, I know some people could not attend town meeting last time because they weren't able to get the day off. So if we could get noticed as soon as possible, thank you.
Okay. Anything else before we move on? Okay, so we need to talk about the replacement, uh, position, uh, that's with the three candidates. So I guess, uh, they have to ask the board and Christine, uh, what's your preferences on how we do this?
Christine, would you like me to speak?
You're muted, Christine, yeah.
I'm sorry, that would be fabulous, or do you want? It doesn't matter.
I can go ahead, we've received three applicants, um, two full resumes, and the third person sent their resume in today. And, um, I think in the past, when you've appointed people to, to various things, if there was more than one person, you, we, we interviewed them. Um, I think that would be a phenomenal thing, if maybe at the next meeting, we would all have their resumes in front of us, and we ask them to attend the meeting, and we interview all three of them, and then we, um, make a, a decision, you know, it has to be a unanimous decision of both boards. Or, or a, yeah, it has to be a.
Majority.
Majority of both boards, I take that back. Um, is that, is that what the plant, is that what the selectman would like to do?
Let's set up interviews for next week.
Yeah, my, my only question was, that's why I wanted to have the two boards here, is that there's a lot of board members, so I didn't know if, um, you know, if individual board members had questions, that's a lot of questions asked through candidates, I didn't know if the two boards wanted to interview the candidates separately at their meetings, and then come back at another meeting to discuss their, uh, choices, or, and that was my only, uh, you know, um, you know, reluctance, I guess, was just the number of people, but if that's fine for boards, I'm fine with that.
Um, could we do it at one meeting, and maybe everyone, if we could all write down what question, everyone have one question to ask? Um, because you'd, we'll need to ask the same question of every candidate.
I, how about if, how about if the individual board members send the questions that they think is pertinent to their chair, and then the chair can, um, take a look at them and just whittle down the questions, because, I mean,
Right.
Three people, um, nine members, that's, uh, you know, it's
Too long.
Seven times we gotta, you know, talk to a person. If we whittle down to three or four questions, I mean, you know, the obvious question is why? Okay, why do you want to do it? Um, you know, and then do you have any background? We all know that, you know, it takes a while for any person sitting on the planning board to get, um, takes at least two to three years to get up and running, um, with a lot of the stuff. Some catch on very quickly, and some take probably two to three terms to catch on. But, um, you know, that's just, uh, you know, it just should be a series of questions, give it to the chairman of each committee, and then they can whittle it down to maybe two or three questions each.
I think that's an excellent idea, so why don't we go with that? Um, all the, everyone just get their questions to the, um, their chairs, because we all may be asking the same questions, and get them to Sean McGinnis. And we can, I think that's an excellent idea.
Yeah, I. May I ask a question?
Let me just, I was gonna say, if, one thing I can tell you as a selectman, when we have to deal with, with other boards, and you, your, your board is a specialty board, I think some of the most important questions, uh, and recommendations should come from the planning board, because you folks know really what the job is, is about and what it takes. So I, I would, I would clearly defer to someone from the planning board if they had a question that was better than my question.
Okay, I mean, we can work that all out, it's.
Sean McGinnis.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
I, I think as a member of the planning board, I'm totally fine with the idea that we each submit the questions we think would be relevant, and I have no problem with the chair reviewing those and seeing if there's obvious ones that three or four of us agree on or something. But I would like to see the opportunity for at least each board to discuss amongst themselves about the questions. I wouldn't want it all just whittled down by one person, or, and I, and that's not because I don't have faith in Lori Ann or anything like that, I just think there are different angles to come at it, and I've already heard mentioned that it's important to make sure people come up to speed with how we've always done things. I think it's equally important to consider people who may have new ideas that are over and beyond, maybe better than how we've always done things. And I think we ought to be really open-minded about what we're looking for. And speaking for myself, I think we ought to look very carefully to be sure that nobody applying has a particular interest in this outcome, or that outcome, or the other outcome of a business dealing that might come before us, but that they're all there just for the benefit of the town of Dartmouth in future years, and so I'd like to discuss it before we decide the questions.
I think you're going to put it off for another meeting, if you do that, because we have to discuss it at our meeting, and then put it off for another meeting. I think that between Christine and I, I think we're capable of looking at the questions and making sure they're relevant. And I think the chairman of the planning, of the board of selectmen, and Sean McGinnis are more than, um, adequate to looking at the questions and coming up with questions that are adequate to ask. I can guarantee you, we're all going to be asking the same questions, it's happened in the past.
Mr. Mickelson.
Uh, Mr. McGinnis, uh, what is your thoughts?
Um, no, I think, uh, Ms. Miller, I kind of, uh, laid it out, uh, fairly well, I think if the two boards, uh, submit questions um, to the chairs, uh, Christine and I can kind of put those together, um, and present a, a, a pared-down list, but, you know, one other option is the night of the meeting, when you're going to ask, interview the applicants, you might take a few minutes beforehand to just review the questions um, as a group, and maybe if, uh, someone opposes, or someone likes, uh, some better than the others, that'd be a good time for them to mention it. So you can kind of finalize the list of questions that night prior to the interviews.
That's a good idea, we can be half an hour earlier.
Mr. McGolden.
Yeah, well, I'm glad, uh, Attorney Cruz is still here, because now this is going to, uh, kind of hit on open meeting. What if we submit our questions to our each individual chair? Chairman just then composes an email with a list of the questions, and then asks each member to rank the importance of the question they feel. Separately, in an email, we respond to that. And then the chair can take it and say, okay, this question has the highest ranking, this is one of the questions we're going to ask, this is the next one, this is the next one, this is the next one, and then submit it to, um, submit it to, uh, Sean and Christine, uh, and then they can kind of look at it and say, okay, we have a, we have a solid five questions to ask, um, we really don't need to ask this. And then submit, and then return it in an email saying, here are the questions we're asking. This is what, this is how we're going to do it. Does that violate open meeting?
A- as soon as it goes to Sean, bounces back to you, and then back to Sean again, it's probably an open meeting violation, yeah.
Okay. Well, I'm just saying, with, if, if we submit questions to, say, our board submits questions to Frank, Frank then compiles the questions, and then sends it back to us saying. And then sends it back to us saying, rank them. Then we send it back to Frank saying, these are the, I, now I respond solely by myself. And I say, Frank, I think these questions are one, two, three, four, five in order.
Yeah, the, the problem is, is you're each having an individual conversation with the chair on the same issue.
Okay, alright.
So it's basically a game of telephone.
Okay.
Um.
I thought that was allowed unless three people did it at all at once.
It, well, theoretically, you're all doing it simultaneously. Even though it's individual email threads, it's, it's, you can't use the, the chair to coordinate what's essentially a group conversation. Um.
Attorney Cruz, may I ask a question on that? Can we, if we communicate individually with Christine and Sean, who are not the chair and they're not members, is that allowed?
The, the, what, the issue becomes is if you provide information to Christine or Sean. And they compile all the questions and then they send it back to each individual to, for ranking purposes. What's happened is each individual member has now communicated with each individual member through Christine or Sean to get their opinions on the questions they're creating.
But what if they do not send it back to each individual? They just hear from us?
Yeah, that's fine.
emphasize what we're seeing and then they tell the respective chairs, that's not completing any loop, is that correct?
Correct. If, if each individual member submits questions to their, their staff and then. That's compiled, as long as there's been no discussion about what questions are good or bad among the members. That's fine. You can, you can compile questions like that.
I got you and I would trust Christine and Sean to sort accordingly and that, so that's a good answer. Thank you.
Mr. Talabon.
Uh, Frank, uh, I think if we, and as far as FinCom's concerned, uh, excuse me. As far as the select board's concerned, I think if we submit questions to you, you've done this well, I've seen under fire. I will leave it up to you to rank the questions, sort them out and, and choose the ones I'm gonna ask and be done with it.
Well, I'd be okay with that if that's what the group wants. It's, it's, you know, it's not my decision, it's the group's decision.
That's my recommendation. Alright.
I'm, I'm comfortable with that.
I'm comfortable with it.
Okay, any other comments?
No, I'm comfortable.
I think the most important thing is we have this meeting interviews next week, because let's get a member on board.
Yes, please.
Okay. Uh, just timing wise uh, for the agenda, so the, the boards would have to get the questions in by Wednesday.
Wednesday, yes. Next week at what time would be this discussion and then the joint meeting?
Meeting be the twenty first.
Six thirty.
Okay.
Assuming the applicants are available.
Okay, Christine, can you, yeah, we'll, we'll tell her to reach out to the applicants and get them on board. If they want to be on the planning board, they'll, they'll come on board.
So Mr. McGinnis, let me be clear. If the group is gonna send stuff to me, you're gonna rank them, when do you need to get back from me? By Wednesday or on Wednesday?
When, no, on Wednesday.
Okay.
Yeah.
So the group would need to do something uh, tomorrow or, or well, early Wednesday. They can't be sending me something at four o'clock in the afternoon if you need to have it by Wednesday. Right?
Got it.
Well, I think what I'm gonna do is I'm gonna ask the planning board members to send everything to Christine directly. That way she's got them directly and I can go in and I can communicate with her um. Directly.
Well, does the select board want to send the things to me or you want to send them to Mr. McGinnis? Have him just send one sheet to me and I can, I can rank that one sheet.
We'll, we'll send it to Sean.
Okay, that works for me. Whatever you guys want.
You want it by, when do you want it by, Sean?
Wednesday.
At the end of the night tonight would be preferable.
Okay.
See, I was giving you guys till Tuesday at least, you know.
By, by Wednesday is good.
Yeah.
So the planning board has their public hearing now, so we're gonna all get off and log into our public hearing. I assume you don't need anything else from us because we're already five or six minutes late.
Okay, no, thank you. Thank you for joining us. We appreciate it.
Okay, thank you. Bye.
Bye.
Okay. Now the FinCom part, Mr. McGinnis.
Uh, yeah, so we've been working with the FinCom and this is the time of the year that we generally uh, Mr. Barnes and I. Uh, generate the budget memo that goes out to department heads to prepare for FY twenty two. We've been meeting with the finance committee um, to try to plan for FY twenty two and as you know, I mean, there's a lot going on. Covid related, we're not sure what's going on with the economy. Uh, the state has level funded the first quarter, which ends at the end of this month, so we still don't have any definitive numbers on. Uh, state numbers that they can pass along to us so we can prepare. Uh, so generally, you know, part of the budget memo process for the year is we ask uh, departments to present a, a level funded budget. Uh, aside from collective bargaining agreements. Uh, we, you know, uh, Greg and I have been talking about this uh, and in discussions with the finance committee. Um, just to get some direction from the select board about which way to go this year. We thought it might be helpful if we asked department heads to prepare two budgets. Uh, the usual level funded budget, but also perhaps a budget with a ten percent decrease. Uh, and identify, you know, what they would uh, do, how they would achieve that ten percent decrease. Um, so that was one item, but also uh, uh, and then, you know, ask. Department heads to articulate the effect of that ten percent increase on their operations and what would be affected. Uh, whether it's service levels, uh, just a decrease in funding for certain things or, or whether it affects services, so. Uh, that's what we talked about in general, but um, we wanted to have the finance committee and the select board together to. Agree upon the direction to present to the department heads so we can start the planning process for next year.
I, I have a question, because when you talk about level funding, that means different things to different people. To me, it means you take the same amount of money you had last year and you use that again this year. But there are always things uh, like, like already contracted raises. Uh, other things like that that fit into there. So are you suggesting those be allowed or not be allowed?
Allowed. They're contractually, the town is contractually obligated for the collective bargaining agreement, so those. Would be, those would be the only increases, but operating wise, that would be level funded.
So it's actually a level service budget, not a level funded budget, actually.
Correct.
Okay. Comments? Gee, everybody's happy. I like that.
No, so ten percent, is that what you're saying? Is that your suggestion at this point?
Yes, I think, you know, uh, Greg has presented a number of scenarios to the, at the finance committee's request, uh, you know, from five percent to twenty percent. I think a ten percent um, budget submittal would be sufficient. Uh, we really don't, like I said, we, we haven't got any numbers from the state, so it's hard to tell and you hear many things. But we haven't heard anything definitive. We thought ten percent would be. Uh, you know, a good number for a department heads to chew on because they would have to make some significant decisions on their operations.
Like shooting in the duck.
It is, but at least they're, they're starting to think about it and prepare. We didn't want to do something drastic because we don't know what drastic would be or. Um, you know, something not as drastic would not have them thinking as much about their operations. So I thought we thought ten percent sufficient.
If the state comes back with a twenty percent decline, does that cause panic? I mean, it causes panic, but I mean, it causes panic in the sense of being prepared.
Right, so you know, the, and we, we'll be in the middle of our budget process when the state, you know, I don't think they're gonna go much beyond January before they really give numbers, so. At that point, we're in the middle of the process and it's, it'd be up to the departments to, you know, start looking at twenty percent and not ten percent.
Okay.
That'll be interesting.
Yeah, we'll hope that doesn't happen.
Yeah, I mean, hopefully not. I mean, hopefully we're not, you know, looking at something as drastic, but.
Right. Any other comments or questions?
Teresa, a question to you, Teresa. Um, where are all the other board members?
Oh, that, we have a quorum. We have a slimmed down, this is a slimmed down board tonight. We have five members here.
Alright.
Yeah, but we have discussed this at length and you know, we've talked with you before about uh, looking, because the charter tells us we're looking for guidance from the select board. Where is, where is the guidance? It's a, it's a tough uh, question to answer. So what we've talked about as a finance committee is in the uh, January process when we start the new fiscal year. Planning, asking people to tie what they've done to goals that they've accomplished this year. And then to look at what vacancies are existing in the programs. Um, we're still operating, we think, under uh, essential spending only. So um, we had some curiosity about that and just to, although we're not, we hear from Greg that this coming year is not gonna be. The biggest concern, we think it's gonna be the year after that, but we have time to plan and that's what we've been um, talking about.
Thank you.
Okay.
Does anybody else on the finance committee have anything to add to that? Any questions?
Go ahead Gloria.
Gloria and then David.
It may sound drastic to, you know, to ask a department to look at a ten percent cut, but it's something that we need to. At least have people thinking about it and that's, it's better than not addressing it at all. And then being hit with a surprise.
David, did you have a question?
Right, twice, probably twenty percent that follows that, that's what I'm concerned about.
Right.
Uh, in terms of planning, how we uh, move forward, knowing that we have very little information, we may not have much to go on for months. Uh, coordinated effort between our select board and, and FinCom, I think is critically important. And to keep our eye on a schedule so that all of a sudden we're now looking down the road and we haven't really met enough to, to uh, to, to keep uh, keep us well informed. And I'd like to make sure that we have a schedule uh, through November, December where we're meeting either as a full committees or maybe subcommittees as we go forward.
And we feel the same way. I'm glad you brought that up because we had also talked in previous meetings about trying to get together with the school committee. And I've been following the school committee meetings and we've talked about it at finance committee. It doesn't appear at this point that it's gonna be a financial issue as much. They have a lot of other pressure on them right now, as I'm sure. Um, you've heard, so I haven't really pushed for that combined meeting and I, you know, I asked Greg tonight if he could see if. They'd be available for our Thursday meeting just to give us an update. There aren't issues for the town warrant for the fall. But just to give us an update on where they are, I think it would be helpful, but I agree and I think everybody in the finance committee feels the same way that that communication that. We had begun um, putting in place continue, so we'll, we'll do that. We'll definitely follow up.
Thank you.
Stay on, go ahead.
Are we sending a message to the department heads that, yes, we're asking you to give us a budget of ten percent, but it could be more also?
Yes, we can include that. In, in our discussions with department heads, just about the budget, you know, they've asked as well, they want to know for planning for next year, so. We've told them the same thing we're telling you all, you know, until we have some definitive numbers, we're, we're only estimating, so it could be worse, it could be better, but you know, ten percent. Uh, is a good way to start, so, but we will, you know, let them know as well in the memo that, you know, things could be uh, better or worse.
Gloria.
Sean, when you, I think you said earlier that you're also gonna be asking them for the effects of this cut, right? So that we have a clear picture as to what this does, right?
Correct. It's not, we don't, we don't let them just know you're lumping off ten percent. Uh, or we want them to identify, you know, what the service cut is, the funding deficit and what the effect on operations is.
Anyone else? Okay.
Be very, some very interesting times we will be living through. Both, both personally and financially as, as a city, as a town. And, and as, as, as the department heads will have some very serious uh, nights without sleep, I'm sure, as a, as a country.
Yeah, the saga continues and it will for some time.
Yeah, so, and it's not going away so soon.
Okay, I guess we're all set. Thank you for the finance committee for uh, those who could be here, thank you.
Thanks for you and everybody.
Discussion.
Thank you.
Okay, take care. Bye bye.
Bye. Okay. Uh. DCTV, do you have people waiting for the hearing that's scheduled for seven o'clock?
Everyone is inside.
Some feedback, what's that from? Sean, you're muted, Sean.
Liz Olympia is here for Faze, Adam Silver's here for uh, Farm and Coasts, Walter Farrier is here, but Jovia is now here. Walter Farrier is here, but I'm not sure what, who is he representing?
Yeah, and um, Farm and Coast doesn't have to be, because we've already, we resolved that. Uh, at the end of last week. So they, they don't have to hang around.
Oh my God, it's Grizzly Adams. Walter, you're muted. This is probably a good thing.
Yeah. You can stay there.
Thank you.
Hey.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay.
Frank, did you say Farm and Coast was resolved and not empty here?
Yes, Farm and Coast was resolved on Friday.
Okay, thank you.
I sent them an email, they did not have to appear. If they chose to appear, I'm letting them know now that they, we, we were gonna be, gonna be skipping over that. So they don't, they don't have to hang around if they don't want to.
Thank you.
Sure. Okay. So let's see, this is a uh, seven o'clock, alleged seven o'clock at seven seventeen now. A hearing for phase two with outside dining compliance. Um, uh, let me uh, let me start and tell you a little bit of history here, because you're gonna need to know that. Um. After I was appointed the approval authority for the town by my colleagues here. Um. I spoke with Chris Micho exactly at his um. Uh, he actually initiated the, the, the conversation. And we decided that it would be a, a good thing to do to have a Zoom meeting. To try and get all the uh, restaurant owners or indoor managers. To participate at a meeting so they could have uh, share common questions. Uh, ask questions they have and, and um, get an answer, hear, hear somebody else's question and answer and try and get out as much information as we could. We originally scheduled two Zoom meetings. We felt the first one went so well that we actually canceled the second one. So it actually was on uh, June fifteenth. If that's, if, I believe that's the, the Monday, if it wasn't the fifteenth, it was the sixteenth, I believe it was the fifteenth, so. Um, and during, during that meeting, we got a lot of good questions. Um, one of the questions that came up for Faze was uh, about barriers. And I kind of said, it depends on the situation. The job has not set up a. Hard and fast rule on barriers, except that they be safe. That's the key. They have to be safe. And. Uh, Liz specifically asked about planters and I told the planters would never be allowed. Uh, planters are wooden box, wooden box in no way assimilates a concrete barrier. So um, I also told all the uh, attendees. That I would give them quick service, trying to be empathetic and sympathetic to their cause. And that if they got the applications turned in. Uh, and they got filled out, there was four prior approvals before it got to me. Uh, that was border health, fire, um, zoning and police. Uh, if that all those approvals that it got to be, I would turn it around within one day. And I think the way it all worked out, at least so far, has been, that's the case. Um. In some cases, I tried to get people to have approvals before they actually. Had nothing more than a plan because I didn't want people to go out spending money and then under fear that they were not gonna. Uh, end up with, with the approval. So I tried to be very honest with them. If, if this is what you're gonna do, you will get approval. Now, um, when Faze put their application in, um, they uh, it got sent out to the four different uh, uh. Folk areas that had to approve. And the one in question now is, is the safety. And when officer, safety officer Joe Viera went out there. Um, he made a comment that the, what they, what they wanted to do is planters and I already told them planters weren't gonna work, but they, that's what they put into their application. So he sent it, he sent an email out. Uh, I've included the email chain in the applicant, in the package that you have, so everybody can see. Uh, the, where it came from. Uh, he sent them an application, uh, a response telling them that their application wasn't good enough. Um, uh, Elizabeth Olympia uh, sent an email back and this is, this is the key part of this whole discussion. Uh, says, thank you for your comments. Per your concerns, our planters will be concrete filled and will be connected to one another. Okay, now let me say that again, they will be concrete fills, okay? Uh, and um, Mr. Viera, Officer Viera said, that would be okay. But he said it was okay, we kind of talked, said, yeah, that's, that's probably close enough to a Jersey barrier, which is what most people chose to use because it's easy. Um, so, so I told them that with, with that as part of their plan, they could continue. And they, they would be accepted. Um, so, so I told them that with, with that as part of their plan, they could continue and they, they would be accepted. When they, when things went on, uh, the planters were built and everything and low and behold, they're not concrete fills. Uh, they're still wooden boxes. And that's what they've been using, which are not safe, in my opinion, not safe in, uh, Officer Vera's opinion. And I told them they had to correct that or their application would be, their, their license would be rescinded. Um, I asked if I could rescind the application, uh, the, the, not the application, the license. Uh, I was told yes. Uh, so I told them that I was rescinding their application, uh, license, sorry, saying application. Uh, rescinding their license. And then I found out that it required a approval of this board. To back up my intention. And that's why we're sitting here today. Um, they, I've had two months of conversation with them and made zero progress. They believe their planters are safe. Uh, and they don't meet the standards that have been established for this town. Uh, there's, there's still a wooden box. A wooden box will stop a bicycle, but it won't stop a car. If somebody, I mean, we had an accident today where somebody hit the town hall by putting the car in the wrong gear and stepping on the gas pedal. Uh, if, if God forbid, but if that happens in Faze parking lot, somebody could end up getting killed. And that's exactly why there's a, there's a, uh, recommendation that use Jersey barriers or certainly something similar. Um, now Jersey barriers don't have to be concrete. Jersey barriers that are full of water were allowed to be okay. Uh, and for those that had a concern about, um, moving these things around because they're heavy and big. The water, in my mind, the water barrier solves that because you set it up when it's empty, you put water in it. When you need to move it at the end of the season, you let the water out and then you can take them and store them in a shed or a garage or, or someplace else. So to me, that's kind of like a perfect, uh, solution. So, uh, I will ask safety officer Joe here if you'd like to add, to what I just said and what his thoughts are.
Uh, no, uh, a tough date, uh, that you weren't aware of today. Excuse me. That was the attorney Farrier on that phase. Uh, they have since, uh, my last inspection, which I think was last week. Uh, they've modified the planters. Uh, what they've done is they've filled, uh, the planters with, uh, actually of many concrete blocks, uh, bringing the weight of those planters up, uh, so they're full. They've also added a, uh, steel, uh, pipe. It's about an inch, inch and a half inch, uh, diameter. Uh, it's almost like an old style of gasoline. And what they're going to do, uh, again, I spoke to Elizabeth's brother, I believe, I forget his name, but I spoke to him today. And what they're going to do is they're going to tie the entire, um, planters together. They're going to, uh, put a, almost like a nut on one end and when they tighten it up, by tying it up with that piece of pipe that runs through, through the, uh, concrete blocks, uh, essentially they're going to be building a wall. That along with the weight and the, they move one of the planters to positioning of it. Uh, it's, it's not as heavy as a Jersey barrier, but I'm going to say it's between the weight of a water filled barrier and a Jersey barrier. Based on what I could see. Uh, the first set of planters, I could physically move them with my, with my hands. Uh, these I tried, uh, I cannot move them. So the weight is up. There is one planter that still requires, probably another 10 to 15 blocks, uh, along with a pipe. I think once that's done and it's tied together properly, it should meet, uh, at the very least, the minimum requirements that we have right now. That was all of about three thirty, quarter or four this afternoon when I met with attorney Farrier. Walter, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, let, I, I'm glad the, the progress. That's no indifferent information than anything I had, so.
Yeah, it, it, I would have said just something this, this, but it was too late in the day. I thought it would just cause more confusion. We, we straightened out the, the Farm and Coasts earlier this week. We had time to get it back, but this thing here is still very fluid. The job is not done yet. Um, and I'll let, uh, attorney Farrier speak to when they plan on doing it. Uh, I am not giving it a final approval. I have not checked with the chief yet. Until we see the job complete, uh, we will not sign on.
Yeah, that was, that was exactly my next question. You anticipated that. Because I would prefer to wait till it's done this time also, because we've been fooled before. And I like to make sure that we get, we're going to actually get what they say that we're going to do.
Correct.
But if it's done as, as that plan, you would be, you would be satisfied with it. Is that?
Yeah, if it's done, it would be one of the first means that we had, and I believe, uh, Sloughman Harrow was around for that one. Um, we talked about the putting, uh, concrete slabs inside the planters. I understand what they did. I understand that the, the problems that they have with it. My concern is purely safety. Uh, essentially what they've done is it's, it's a hybrid by using the concrete blocks and a lot of them along with that pipe. Essentially, they're going to have a, a, a guard rail within the concrete block. So if somebody were to strike that, that planter, the tension that holds the planters together along with the, the, the weight, that whole unit should move, we hope. I mean, anything's possible, but, uh, compared to the water barriers, uh, nothing's better than Jersey barrier. I'll, I'll tell you that, but compared to the water barriers and some of the other things that we have in town, um, that'll work. And I think every restaurant has an individual, um, they have some individual problems and, with not, it's not one plan fits all. And I think we've done that. I think you've seen that over time. Every restaurant, we've done something a little bit different to kind of fit the,
Right.
parking lot. So if they do everything they're supposed to do this time and it, everything's nice and tight, um, then we should be in good shape.
Yep, that's, that's why I appreciate the same pair of eyes looking at all this stuff. And I appreciate everything you've done to this project because it's been, uh, a little fast and furious minds, but, but your, your common eyes are what's determining, uh, whether I give approval or not, and I, and I appreciate that. So I, I just want to try and see, and when you tie them all together, you're essentially, uh, they act as one. Is basically that, that's where the strength comes from, right?
And if, and everything, every time we've asked, uh, anybody, I think again, Farm Coast, they got, they got creative on one of them. They actually added more, uh, barriers by adding more barriers and reinforce the ones that were really important. Though they're not tied together, the mere fact that you have two barriers backing up one barrier, creates that, in my mind, that mechanical connection. You're not going to move it. So again, they were, they, they put some thought into it finally and they did it the right way. So we're comfortable that one, that one, that's why we, we signed on, off on that one. And I think Faze, if they do this, uh, and they do it the right way, I think we'll be in good shape and we'll be able to sign off on theirs also.
Okay, sure. Nothing would make me happier than, than everybody doing it right and everybody getting to function the way they want to, uh, uh, without aggravation. So, so I'm hoping it works out that way too. Uh, Mr. Farrier, could you, could you give us information on whether you expect us to all be done?
I sure can. I would, I would just like to, uh, commend, uh, safety officer Joe, uh, Joseph Viera for, uh, spending the time with me, uh, today and going over the, uh, the planters that are there. They are filled with concrete blocks and they're tied together with a, uh, two inch cast iron pipe. And I believe it's six, there's six planters there. They will all be starting tomorrow morning. They will all be tied in, to the, uh, with that, uh, two inch cast iron pipe will tie six of them in. And as I went over this with Joseph Viera today, they, uh, they will be, uh, wholly drilled into the end units. And they'll be capped off with a metal plate and a cap so that, uh, the compression of that pipe, will, uh, will add to this, the strength. So that if anybody hit one of those, they would have to move six planters. And I can assure you that, uh, that, uh, I was there and I, I was there when, uh, Mr. Viera tried to move one of them. And, uh, they can't be moved individually. The, uh, con- the concrete isn't poured concrete, but there, there's going to be additional concrete blocks. It will be added to, I think, one of the end units that, uh, Mr. Viera went over and noticed and we agreed to that. So starting tomorrow morning. And this isn't, it's, it's not a big job. It won't take that long because, uh, 90% of it's already been done. So by tomorrow, I think we should be able to have the total job completed. And, uh, it will be the safest, I, I believe, the safest barrier that's been in the town of Dartmouth that I've seen. Because I've gone to every location in the town of Dartmouth. And, uh, uh, this isn't a, uh, criticism of anybody, but some of them are strong and some of them aren't so strong. I can assure you that Faze has been in business in Dartmouth successfully and, they pride themselves on having an establishment that's not only safe and clean, but something that the town can be proud of. And they will continue that policy. And, uh, by tomorrow, I, I'm assu- assuring you that the town will be happy. Mr. Viera spent time with me today and I think that, uh, we've got this thing to a point where everybody will be happy.
I pre- I appreciate that explanation. I also agree with you when Faze has been a longstanding, a good citizen of the town. That's why I was a little frustrated that we weren't able to make progress. So all that in the past, I'm glad, I'm glad we are making progress now. I would like to ask Mr. Vera, when do you see, see yourself giving a final inspection?
Uh, attorney Farrier has my, uh, cell phone number. Uh, he can call me tomorrow. When he calls me, I will head down there. I will look at it. I will report back to the chief. And once, uh, I get approval, I will send a email to Christine, which will, I'll see you on that.
Yeah.
It's all set.
Yeah, ma- make sure I know so that I can move on. I appreciate that. Uh, Mr. Mickelson.
So, uh, Mr. Farrier, I can attest to all the photographs, because I think you've sent me all of them. So, uh, um, my, my, uh, I'm not trying to make, uh, light of any of this. Um, we have a general concern about, uh, the whole board has a general concern about s- saving, our restaurants. A hundred and sixteen thousand restaurants. Will go out of business this year in the, in this country, if not much larger number. We don't want any of our restaurants going out of business. We want to try to cooperate with them in a safe manner. In a healthy manner for everyone, especially the, the, you know, the, the patrons of, of the restaurants. And, and also the, uh, the, the, the staff that work there. They need to be safe. This outside dining is not, uh, one shot. We're going to be there next year. I'm telling you right now, my prediction. I know I'm right. We're going to be there next year. We're going to have the same issues. Uh, so we need to make sure that everybody's on board early, that we don't have any latecomers that, um, are not playing by the rules. Just let everyone do, incorporate by, 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 about safe rules so they can make money. But I mean, and I'm ser- serious that, um, uh, if, uh, I, I would like our board to, to do like what the city council did in New Bedford. To, 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 to honor our commitment, to the restaurant owners and the people and their, and their, their workers and most importantly, their patrons. Like us all to support that in the best way we can. Thank you.
That we all support it, but we need it to be safe at the same time.
I said that Frank, in a safe manner.
But you can't compromise safety. So we, the rest of the stuff you said, we all agree with.
I'm not compromising anything Frank. I said in a safe manner.
Yes, I know that.
Right.
Which also gave a speech about how we need to support our restaurants. We all support our restaurants. So that's a foolish comment, okay?
I don't think so.
Well, that's your, that's your opinion. Uh, the point is, the point is, everything's been safe. Uh, now it sounds like it's going to be safe on this. Uh, and I will remove my objection as soon as I hear from, from safety officer Vera. People should be aware that the governor has already said that the, the instead of November first deadline, there's probably going to be a, a sixty day extension. Um, past the end of the coronavirus. I'm not sure, I was not, even demarcate that, light of the sand. I also am not sure how many people are going to want to sit out there when it gets really cold. But, but they can, according to the governor. And also there's, there was a, there's a project, I believe it's called Sheared Streets. Uh, some additional money was added to that. I believe it was an extra five million dollars. That's going to be available to restaurants that need help. Uh, getting, um, whether it be heaters or barriers or whatever, I believe they can apply to that. But I've seen no details on it, just the fact that it was, uh, announced. So that, that can certainly help, uh, restaurants, not only in our town, but other places too. So, Mr. Mr. McDonald.
Yeah, um, I agree with Stanley in regards to that outdoor dining, is going to happen next year. My optimistic, my optimistic view is it's not because of, an extended coronavirus. I think it's because it's a good thing to add to the business. Um, so with that, I think it's important that the town review the permitting process. And that maybe we should set up some type of, uh, I guess as, as a, a focus group on, uh, the officials that are the most effective, which would be Officer Vera, um, the building inspector, um, and whoever else was involved in this permitting process that by chiefs. And maybe get a handful of the restaurant owners and just kind of meet a couple of times. And, and discuss the permitting process. And maybe we can look to streamline the process a little bit more net for next year and make it easier. Um, because I have a feeling, a lot of, a lot of the restaurants really like the idea of having this, you know? I could tell you right now, Caskin Pig is going to do it next year. You know, Faze is putting an investment in with those planters. Now I know they're going to be doing it next year. Um, you know, so I think so, I think maybe, you know, I would say, once this, once the outdoor seasoning is going, maybe sometime in, uh, December or early January, just kind of maybe have that focus group meet. Um, if it's just one or two times, just to kind of see how you can streamline the process, how you can, come up with, uh, uh, a finite, not really a finite set, but at least a set of guidelines to follow that everybody has. So that the restaurants that are in operation now can follow it and that restaurants in the future can come around and follow it.
Yeah, I, I, I have heard that possibly that, that next year, we might send everything through the normal process a restaurant would, would have to go through. Uh, when they're like opening for the first time, for example. Uh, and with a description of what, what they want to do on their property and how they're going to do it and let that go through the normal thing. But, but I, I agree. I think your suggestion is good. I think that, you know, we're a lot smarter now than we were four months ago. Uh, and we can get smarter yet about how we do this. And I certainly don't want to see anybody, uh, not be able to participate. Uh, especially if they don't understand what they really have to do to, to do things correctly. So, um, maybe Mr. McGinnis can make that suggestion to, uh, uh, what, what Sean has just said about, uh, uh, a focus group and, you know, get, get some folks, uh, to weigh in on, uh, what they think.
Uh, yes, we can certainly do that. I, I know one thing, we've, we've talked about this, that this outdoor seating is, certainly going to be back next year, we assume with the, the gov- through the governor's order. But we'd like to have the establishments go through the, uh, the, the permitting process that we have in place currently for outdoor seating. I think it's a great idea though to have a, uh, committee put together of some restaurant orders. Because you know, as you can see from this time around, a lot of restaurants have had to get creative about where they put their outdoor seating. So, uh, generally, uh, in the past for outdoor seating, the board would not have allowed outdoor seating in some of these areas like the parking lot. So I think it's great to have a focus group together to look at some options and for the board to be more, uh, creative and, and how they're, allow the restaurants to be more creative about how they, uh, implement their outdoor seating. So, but we would like to have them to go through the formal process just because it's a good process. Um, and it helps to kind of weed out some of the things or some of the disagreements or some of the confusion. Um, I think the town was great, uh, in working with the restaurants when the governor implemented the order on short notice. Uh, we tried to get everyone up and, and running as soon as possible, but it's also as safely as possible. So, I think if we can, you know, have our formal mechanism in place, this gives the restaurants plenty of time to prepare for next year. Uh, we will certainly work with them to be as creative as possible about where their seating is and, um, but I think it'll, it'll really help the process if we go through the, the formal process.
Yep, and I, I'd also like to say is, uh, all the restaurants that I've, uh, had contact with are, are extremely, um, happy with the way things turned out. And they wanted to thank the town and myself personally and obviously Joe Viera, uh, for his help and everything and trying to make everything safe because their, their number one concern was the safety of their patrons. Uh, and being in compliance and we also, so to me, it was, it was a good process. It was a little bit clues you getting going. And how we all made it work, but, but we, we did all make it work. So anything we can do to improve that for next time will be very welcome by everybody. So, I guess, uh, I guess we're good. I guess we don't have to do anything else.
Gracie, the, the, just in follow up on that, that item. Uh, when we, when my team, the guys in my unit, uh, because it wasn't just me, the other guys went out with me too in case I was off or whatever, there would be some continuity. Uh, when we spoke to almost all of the owners, we explained to them that, whether it's temporary, full time, whatever the case may be, the protective measures that are in place, we, we treated it as a, it's a permanent fixture. So if they, obviously there'll be some tweaking here and there, but if they propose the same plan for next year, it should go seamless. Because we've had a year to go through it. If we see some different things here and there, again, I haven't heard back from any restaurant. There was only one that, uh, they put a plan in and he never went through it. It was the, um, one in the village, the sail off. He had a bad start with that. We never heard from him again. Uh, all the rest of them seem to be in good shape. Uh, I think it would be great to meet with them to maybe tweak it for next year. But hopefully the process, if they put it in the same spot, if we're in the same situation, we shouldn't have to go through all this because they already know what they need to do. So we've already had the, the growing pains. So I think we should be in good shape. If everything stays the way it is. And, you know, again, everything's subject to tweaking, you know, but, um, But the way things are right now, it's pretty good considering.
Yep, I agree. And in fact, if the restaurant owners leave everything the way it is, they probably won't have to change anything, as you said, because if it's working well now and it's safe, that's good. So, maybe we won't have to have any kind of other application process or anything. Maybe we can just instead, what they've already gotten, add years or two or months or whatever is necessary to make it easy for them. That might be a help to them too.
I just want to add one other thing. This outside dining has created an enormous amount of revenue for the restaurants. More than they, more than they ever thought that they would bring in. They thought it would be a minor, minor contribution to their business. It's been a major contribution. So, that's why, again, as I said earlier, that it will be back next summer, or spring and summer and late. And maybe in a larger scale, maybe other restaurants will want to get in on it because they've seen firsthand that there is money to be made. There's an investment to be made like any other business. But the reward is, so far this year, has been grand financially. So, thank you.
Okay. Any other comments, questions? If not, I'm satisfied. I'll just put the punctuation mark on this when I hear the final report. And Faze should be good to go and everything's fine. So, this is much more pleasant than what could have happened with the resistance that I was getting. So, I'm glad. I'm very pleased with that. So, I guess this hearing is over.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, board members.
Thank you. Thanks. Thanks for the explanation. Okay. And as I said earlier, Farming Coast, we cleared that up. We finished clearing, we started clearing it up on Thursday, finished it up on Friday. So, they're good to go. They've already been told they're good to go. So, there's no issue there either. So, I think we're all set. All set with outdoor compliance right now anyway. Okay. Safety Officer Vera, did you want to, did you want to add anything else or?
No, I'm good. Those are the only two loose ends that we had and we'll go from there. And we're always available for restaurants if they want to reach out to us, if they have any questions or concerns, we'll work with them.
And again, I thank you very much for helping with the process. I certainly couldn't have done it without you. So, I'll tell the chief that if you'd like.
It's been interesting. Oh, no, he's well aware of everything that goes on. He gets a daily report from me regarding this.
Yep, great. Okay, so thanks again.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Bye.
Our next item, the new business, charter review committee appointments. Mr. McGinnis.
Yes, so as you know, and I mentioned in previous meetings, this is a charter review year. So, the charter review consists of nine members. Two from the finance committee, two from the school committee, two appointed by the moderator, one from the planning board, and two appointed by the select board. You'll see in your packets. All the other boards and committees have made their appointments. It's up to the select board now to make their two appointments. We did get two applicants in your packet. You can see them since the last meeting. And also, once you select, make your appointments, but also there's generally some ex officio members that don't have voting rights. So, and in the past, it's been my position, the town administrator and town council, you would have to make that appointment as well. So, with that, I will let the board discuss.
Three ex officios?
I just put three. I think in the past, it's two. I wasn't sure.
Yeah, I think it was, the last time, I think it was, all right, so just on the ex officios. I'm going to make a motion that we appoint Sean McGinnis and Anthony Savistano as ex officio members. If Anthony doesn't want to, the assistant Brian Cruz can be in instead, or they can switch off back and forth.
I'll second that motion.
Okay. We have a motion and a second discussion. David?
I would, if it's available, and if there's a third, I would like to serve as an ex officio member.
No, I don't. No, I, let me just, let me just say, I'd rather have, I'd rather have, no, because David, it ended up being three, three members. I know you're going to, I know you're not a non-voting member. But I don't, I don't want anybody to say that the select board is stacking the commission. I would rather just have our two appointments and that's it. I mean, if you want to be appointed, that's fine. But not as an ex officio.
Well, I don't want to be appointed because the time commitment to me is, although I know I put a lot of time into it, I don't think it's fair to say that I could be a regular member on a regular basis. On the other hand, as a select board member, there's nothing more important in town to me than the charter commission and the ten year plan. And it would be some help and perspective to be on it and realizing it's a non-voting and it's not committing full time. That's why I would, that's why I'd like to do it. Whether I consider stacking, I can't vote.
I know. It's perception, David, for me. That's all. That's all it is.
I would assume that meetings will be open, which means you could drop in anytime you want, David.
Right.
And as frequently as you want. So, if you can't make it, you don't have to worry about not being there. But if you want to be there, I would think you could be there.
Well, that's not a whole lot different than being an ex officio, but I obviously always have that option. I think it's discredibly important to me personally, as well as, I think it'd be some assistance in terms of information to the select board.
I would only add that if the select board appoints two of its members, then if another member was there, it could be an open meeting law violation. There'd be three.
We don't have three. We don't have any.
Well, we don't know yet.
You don't know yet, but I'm just saying, just kind of keep that aware. So, if you
I understand.
The select board members and then David wants to be ex officio or even show up to the public meeting, it could be an open meeting law violation.
Yeah, okay.
We haven't got that file yet, but that's clearly, could be a possibility. I didn't want to ask before we start talking about the two that sent their applications. If there was anybody on the select board that was interested in doing the job, the only thing, I mean, I appreciate the two folks that, or anybody that raises their hand to do something, and I think that that's a good thing. Okay? The only thing I'm thinking of with a select board person being there, we have to live with the idiosyncrasies of the charter that was created long ago. And to be on the positive side, again, I'm not pushing this one way or the other, but just trying to speak both sides to it. On the positive side, it might be helpful to, for the committee to have that inside information that we live with every day to help guide their discussions and stuff.
Well, that was all the reason why I thought it was, I'm really happy that these two people stepped forward. They seem like they want to be vigorous members and it's important. They understand the commitment. But I remember how the last one around, the last charter presentation went. And frankly, all the work it did, I thought it was, it was unfortunate the way it transpired. And I would like to be able, I thought I could monitor that. And look, if there's a lot of pushback, that's fine.
Well, I'll be honest with you. I was, I was contemplating on putting my hat, my name in. I think I would like to. My consideration would be, so far, the names that are here did not serve on the previous committee. I think it's important that a new set of eyes look at, you know, look at the charter. And I think that's, you know, I'm willing to, I'm willing to, you know, to be one of the two on the board, representing the board.
Okay. That's why I asked because, you know, again, I don't care either way, but if somebody's interested, and I believe, again, I believe someone from this board would be helpful to the process, which is what we all want. We might want, if there's any suggestions made for a charter, one of the big advantages of having lived with the idiosyncrasies of it is that you know areas that could possibly be helpful. That might be helpful to the group too. But again, if nobody wants to do it either, that's okay too. I just throw it out there.
Well, that's also important too, that each member, you know, whoever the members are, you know, just kind of like, you know, gauge the board as to what they feel. You know, some of the changes or some of the things that should be looked at, you know, and that's one of the things that, you know, I was going to do if selected, you know, is just to kind of send something out to you guys and say, look, what are the areas you think we need to take a look at?
Yep, yep. I know when the last one was done, I know I was asked to be interviewed. And I don't know if this new group is going to, when I'm doing something like that, excellent people around town that are, that are running the town or working to run the town. That might be helpful also. But so, I just want everybody to be clear about what our choices are. We have two volunteers, and if Sean wants to do it, that's the third one. We need to pick two of the three in order to fill the slots. Okay, is everybody clear on that?
I'll make a motion to accept Sean's commitment to the charter.
Okay.
And are we going to vote separately or another, a second person?
Well, let's do it separately. Because that way we can discuss the two civilians, if you will.
I would just, you might want to reword that just to appoint Sean. I know what you're saying, John, but it might, it just sounds better if you make a motion to appoint Sean to the committee.
I'd like to make a motion to appoint Sean to the committee.
Charter review committee.
Charter review committee.
A second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Roll call, John?
Yes.
Sean?
I'll say yes.
Stanley?
Very brave of you. Yes.
Yes.
And I'll say yes. Okay, so that's one of the two. So, now we have two volunteers of which we need to pick one of. Stanley, you want to start the discussion?
I'd like to nominate Brock Cudero to the charter review committee.
Now, I'll second that motion.
Okay, discussion?
Yeah, I mean, it's between the both of them. I mean, it's funny because one, one is, well, I don't know how to do there, but I'm wondering if Brock has the time. The only reason why is because I know he has a lot of commitments outside of the town, outside of his job with the state. Whereas Troy does not.
Well, I was wondering that as I was reading through his resume and everything. But I also know Brock's a smart guy and he read everything that was required for what this job is going to entail. And I felt I'd leave that decision up to him. If he didn't think he could do it, I believe he wouldn't have volunteered.
I mean, it's like
Comments also.
I mean, I asked Troy to think about it and was pleased that he, you know, submitted his name. Brock also contacted me about it and I told him, submit your name. So, I mean, I know both of them very well. I know both of them will do a very good job. And, you know, maybe the easiest thing would be for me not to, not to be on it and put them on. It would be, that way I won't have to pick, you know, you know, between the two. But I think this is very important. I think this is an important charter year to review because there are some things that, in my mind, that are lacking, that need to be corrected. And we're doing one of them, you know, in October.
Right.
At a town meeting. So, that's one of them. So, that's one thing off that list. So, I mean, yeah.
Two points though. Yeah, I think you would be a valued member for sure. And two, you've already been appointed, so you can't back out.
Right.
Just to comment about Brock, I think Brock would never have put his name in if he felt he couldn't give a hundred percent.
I agree. I know Brock too. I think I think
And he's that type of man. And I take him for his word.
Okay. Now, there's no such thing as having an alternative for this, I'm assuming. Is that right, Mr. McGinnis?
It's not stated in the charter.
Of course, yeah.
Okay. So, we have a motion and a second. We'll do a roll call. John?
Yes.
And Sean?
Yes.
And Stanley?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
And me, yes. So, Brock is appointed along with Sean. And we'd like to thank Troy Tofano. Maybe we could send him something, let him know that we appreciate it very much. And we've gone from having no volunteers to having a bunch of volunteers. So,
Right. Okay, so we got to send out letters to all the members, so they have to be
We'll send out appointment letters to everybody.
Yeah, just one in.
Yeah.
Okay.
And then what I'll do is I'll work with the members to schedule the first meeting. And at that meeting, they can set up a chair and be off and running.
Yep.
Is it normal for town council to be part of this committee on a full time basis?
As ex officio, yes. I want the charter quite of that, so yes.
But I mean, meaning that expected to be attending all meetings is a, although, okay.
Maybe not the first one, but at least, you know.
It seems to be, it seems to be really important, yeah.
Yes.
And the way the motion was phrased, it could be either one.
Right.
So, one can't make it, the other one can go. So, that would be you too. So,
Yeah, and they do talk to each other. So,
Yeah. Okay, item B, election updates. Mr. McGinnis.
Yes, I just wanted to present the board. This is a big election year, so I wanted to present the board with some numbers from the previous election. I put some information in your packet, just as a comparison. So, this primary, we had a turnout of seven thousand four hundred forty six voters. That's thirty-two percent of the registered voters. That's quite a bit, just to give you some comparison. The two thousand eighteen state primary, it was a fifteen percent turnout. So, it was double that. And then the two thousand and sixteen state primary was a three point eight percent turnout. So, turnout is very high. We processed five thousand four hundred sixty one mail in ballots. So, those ballots came in through the mail. We processed them, we mailed them out, and we got the ballots back in. So, you know, you've heard me mention many times that it was quite a bit of work and a lot of contributing staff participating in that. And that just shows you some numbers. Like, that's quite a bit. You know, we had a number of early voters, four hundred forty one. We have early voting for a week. That's how many people came in, and we had forty four poll workers. So, you know, we're really gearing up for the November election. I think turnout is going to be very high. You know, mail in ballots are going to be very high. So, we're going to, you know, we learned a lot from this process. We're working with the new town clerk. And our election consultants, we have a meeting coming up the next two weeks to recap the primary and prepare for the November election. So, we want to be very prepared and organized. So, we will be. On that page two, I just wanted to give you a list of all the staff that provided support. I think you can see from the town clerk's office, the staff that supported that office, then volunteers, and then I walked you through the election, the mail in voter processing. You can see all the staff that really pitched in to help process those five thousand mail in ballots. The early voting machine testing, you can see that's a big effort. And then last, there's our election consultants that really helped us through the process. So, you know, I just wanted to share that with the board so you get a feel for what was happening and what was going on and that what we're preparing for in the future. You know, Greg Barnes was a huge help in spearheading the ballot, mail in ballot effort. Sarah, the new clerk has been excellent. And I mentioned many times, Kelly Thompson kind of spearheading the effort in the clerk's office in the absence of a clerk and assistant town clerk. So, you know, we're hoping to get, we are getting the office stabilized. It's been great. They've been learning a lot and contributing. Cody Hadad as well has been helpful in the election process. He's the interim director of development. So, we feel very prepared and very ready for the next election. So, we're looking forward to it. And I think we're going to streamline some things. We learned some things and go forward. It'll be good.
Great news.
As I read through this, I had a couple of thoughts. First of all, I expressed once before was that I think you did a great job with this, Mr. McGinnis. We were left in the lurch. We had a real problem. And yet, it all went off. I don't want to say seamlessly, but it certainly, it certainly got done. And you led that charge and I'm grateful for that. But as I also read through the list, I'm thinking that the select board, it'd be nice if the select board sent a letter to each of the people that were responsible for making it all happen, expressing the difficulty of the whole thing and how very important it was for each of their pieces that they did to make it a success that turned out. Because this is extremely, this is one of the most important things a community can do is to make sure the voting goes correctly. And it did. So, I don't know how the rest of the board feels like that, but I think a letter from the select board would be a nice touch.
I think so too. Right. Just a, just one quick thing. Of the, just on the fifty-five hundred ballots, mail in ballots, now, those weren't the absentee, correct?
No, I want to say we had three hundred absentee ballots, two sixty, three hundred. We're waiting some from other information from the state that we didn't get in time for this report. So,
Okay. Of the, of the, under the fifty-four hundred plus, how many of those were actually mailed versus how many were dropped off in the town hall?
That's a great question. I couldn't tell you that. Maybe fifty fifty.
Really?
We did get a lot of drop offs. I mean, up until election day, they could drop off until eight o'clock, and they were. So,
Right. Okay. Right, okay. I mean, let's, I, I, I just want to say because. You know, we worked. As, as most of you know, I deal with the social media uh, on a regular basis. And there were people um, who had said they had filled out, they didn't get anything, or they got the wrong ballot. Um, we know for a fact that there was about four hundred people who. Sent in the mail-in ballots and they didn't mark off what ballot they wanted. Or they marked off the incorrect ballot, or they only marked off uh, others. So the option for, um, so what we tried to do is try to come up with the best information possible. There is a website, um, at the Secretary of State's office to, to track your ballot. Um, and we posted that up several times and a lot of people found that very valuable. Um, so I'm sure that'll be happening again. Uh, and I also know that the Secretary of State's office also. Um, allows, now has a, a way to check your status as a voter. Um, to whether or not you still, you are a registered voter, so um, if anybody wants to check that. But uh, personally, I just want to thank Sean and. And everybody who got involved in this. We, we, it was only a month's time. Uh, I mean, the, the resignations of two people in that office was uh, the timing wasn't, you know, was unfortunate. Uh, and you had that such a quick turnaround time to get all that stuff done. Um, so under the circumstances, everybody did a great job and, and, and the suggestion of, of sending out uh, thank yous to everybody. I think is a, is, is something that should be done.
Okay, David, you have a comment?
A couple, uh, I, I, I think we were basically sabotaged before this thing all happened and I think. The fact that you pulled it off and organized this was a incredible job, considering also that it was a huge turnout on top of all that. And November's going to be gigantic, there's no question about it. Um, I also would like to add that there was, um, there was a lot of, I think a lot of quiet. Uh, soldiers in the, uh, in the army that was around for years and when their leader, fearless leader left the premises. Uh, there's a lot of experience and um, and veterans that were in the whole staff and I'm wondering. Um, I had, I had a couple of comments. Oh, uh, and you said he's doing some postmortems and reviews. Do you think we've done as much as we can to get feedback from the veterans of the whole staff that we can make it even better, Sean?
Uh, yes, I mean, so the, you know, a lot of the poll workers have been poll workers for a number of years. Uh, they were very helpful and in, in, uh, you know, helping set up the polls and, and operating the polls. So yeah, we leveraged their experience. Um. Yes, it's a good opportunity. Anytime you're doing something new like this, we looked at, you know, more efficient ways of doing things. You know, we had the two new precincts, which. You know, we were forced to use, but I think they're going to work out well in the future, so a lot of opportunity there. A lot of ways to do things, uh, like I said, more efficiently and, and provide better service to the public, so. Yes, so you know, we, we do the best we can and we, we were certainly open ears to everyone's contributions and.
Opinion. We, did it cost a lot more money to pull off the election? Actual dollars?
It did, yes. You know, it's, it's hard to say too, you know, the mail-in ballots, uh, you know, we would have had to process those. Uh, regardless of whether we had an established clerk's office down there, so I don't. What the plan was to do that, or if, if there, you know, was one, or what, you know, it would have entailed. I mean, we really, you saw, we had to pull in a lot of staff to help make that happen, so.
Yeah.
Um, so there was a cost attributed with that, you know, with our election consultants, there's a cost uh, contributed with that, but. Um, you know, these are, that's, you know, what you have to do.
Thank you. Great job, Sean.
I mean, at least none of the ballots, you know, weren't counted.
Yeah.
Were in Franklin.
Money, I can just say money well spent. Great job, Sean, and, and everybody that worked with you.
Yeah, I, I can, I can tell you, nobody likes, especially in the community and, and our position. No one likes to see a problem like this pop up. Okay, but it's, it's, it makes the heart feel good that not only that we were able to do it, but we had so many good people working on it to make sure it happened. And I think that's a feather in the cap of people in Dartmouth, our employees and other, uh, I think it's just great. Uh, we even had volunteers. Uh, stepping up, so uh, I was very, very pleased and I'm very happy about the way it all turned out, so.
Excellent.
Any other comments? Okay, item C, appointment to the CPC. Uh, member at large. And I guess that's, that's just John Souza wants to be a, uh, the at-large member. And he was formerly the uh, planning board representative for the CPC.
Yep. I'll make a motion that we appoint John Souza as the uh, member at large for the CPC.
I'll be glad to second that.
Okay, very good. Uh, we have a motion and a second. Uh, any discussion? Okay, roll call, John?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Uh, Stanley?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
And I'll also gladly do that, so. We'll let him know and uh. That's good. I'm glad he's still involved in the, in some parts of the town. He's got a wealth of knowledge. Okay, uh, item D, draft warrant articles review. Mr. McGinnis?
Yes, so uh, in, in the past, what I've done is just list the warrant articles uh, coming up on the town meeting. Um, just to give you an overview, uh, my goal is for our next meeting to have a draft warrant for the board to review. Um, I have five items on here. There's actually seven. Um, the planning board article, the petitioned article, I did not include on here, so that's on it. And also, we have a capital budget. Um, article that we usually have, so. Uh, I'll go through the list, so the appropriation to the stabilization fund, tough time saying that, um. Um, the community, uh, the Community Preservation Committee has an article for Russell's Mills Landing Conservation Project. Try to get uh, Mr. Baker Smith in to keep the board updated in that in the next meeting. Um, the board has requested a charter amendment to make the town clerk position appointed. Uh, we'll have draft language on that, that we worked with town council on. Uh, there's the lease or sale of the Reed Road property. Um, so we'll also have the wording on that. Been working with town councils, so for the draft warrant, uh, next week, we'll have all that together. Um, and then there's the general bylaw amendment, which was the vacant and seasonal buildings, uh, otherwise sometimes called the abandoned property bylaw. Uh, this coincides with the issue with Sable Way.
Yeah, the zombie house, yeah.
Yes, so uh, yeah, this was before town meeting in the past, but I think, you know, things have changed a little bit. I think that the media has shed light on uh, some of these issues with these properties, so. Uh, that'll be available for the board to review. And then uh, the capital uh, budget items that are usually presented, the capital budget committee's meeting this week to present, to finalize those. Uh, and then the petitioned article, so that's what we're looking at.
That's good. That'll be about a fifteen-minute town meeting, yeah.
Um, just out of curiosity, on the Reed Road property, there was something that um, Attorney Salvastano brought up regarding. The um, the turnover from the town clerk's off, uh, town treasurer's office to the town. Has that been resolved?
Uh, no, but that can be done uh, prior to. I mean, or, or after, so uh, he'll, town council will be in next week to kind of cover that in detail. It, it gets a little complicated.
Right, okay.
Nothing is simple.
No.
Okay. Uh, Tom, item E, town meeting date change and format.
So.
Yes.
Yeah, I'll give a little background, so you know, where it's, uh, according to our yearly schedule, the calendar we put together with a clerk. Your town meeting is scheduled to be October twentieth. You know, we did have the spring town meeting late at the end of June. Um, and I know uh, select remember McDonald's had asked that we, he, uh, move it to a Saturday. Uh, because it seems successful in the spring. So, you know, it's up to the board. I think you can see there's some uh, dates that we've included. In the packet to show you what changing the dates would mean for uh, meeting dates. Really leading up to just getting the warrant signed and mailed out. So it's generally, we, these dates all revolve around giving the town clerk's office enough time to mail out the uh, warrant to the town meeting representative, so. Um, it's scheduled for Tuesday, the twentieth, uh, but. It's up to the board's discretion about how they want to do it and if they want to do it in person or via Zoom, but the governor's order is still in effect, so.
Well, I think it ought to be Zoom, that's my opinion. I also agree with Mr. McDonald that trying to keep moving it to Saturday, I think is a good thing, because ultimately, I think that's the right thing to do. Uh, because we've had so many complaints over the years about not doing it that way.
Right.
Uh, so that, that's my thoughts on that. Mr. McDonald?
Well, thirty days from today would be October twenty-first or October twentieth. Uh, so the next Saturday would be October twenty-fourth. Um, I don't think October thirty-first is a good date.
It'd be for some people.
Too many tricks that can be done on that day that will probably not treat us well, so.
Didn't the governor abolish that date?
I would, uh, yeah, I don't know how it's, I don't know how that's going to happen. I think we're just going to. We're going to throw candy from the door at people, so as they come by.
Yeah.
Um, so I would like to make a motion that we hold. Uh, the uh, fall town meeting uh, on Saturday, October twenty-fourth at ten AM.
On Zoom.
Second, second it.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
It ten would be all right, or nine would be better?
Um, it was nine before, right?
Uh, no, it was ten. I would recommend ten, you know, regardless, we're, we're, I would plan on starting a half hour, forty-five minutes late. You know, we really encourage uh, the town meeting reps to log in early.
Yeah.
You know, with the.
They can use the nine to, nine to ten time to log in.
Yep.
Yeah, right. So, I mean, we would like, some did, were great. They logged in early and they were all set. Others just logged in right at ten, so. Uh, you know, the clerk's office has to verify all the uh.
You should start it at nine and let them all get in early.
But we do that, but they, if they know it starts at ten, there's a majority that will just log in at ten. And you know, with a short meeting like this, you know, there's a concern about the quorum, so hopefully, you know, people are still invested enough to um. Log in on, with the, the short warrant, so.
Yep.
Well, if the instructions go in and say the meeting's at ten and everybody login starts at nine, you know, then I think that should. You get them, I would think you would probably get more than. Half of the people who are going to come are going to be at least ready to go, so we'll be closer to. Um, you know, the quorum.
Yeah, ju- just a question, being a, being a fall town meeting, no one had any suggestions about doing it at night?
That was my, my question. Uh, this is a, obviously a very short meeting in comparison to what we had before. This meeting could be longer to get registered than it's going to be the meeting itself.
Yeah.
If the only really glitch in the meeting last time was how long it took to get set up, which was understood and maybe. Is there a way to have more people do it, Sean? Or, or you, one of, it's gotta be one at a time?
No, no, we have multiple people. I mean, we don't, I think we had three. But they, you know, we had two representatives from the town clerk's office. It's just a lot, you know, when it's like logging in on Zoom, you know, that you, you're muted. The, the video is off and you've got to get the video on, you've got to have them identify themselves, have them change their titles so you know who they are.
Is there a way to do a more than three? At a time, more, 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 registering three?
Yeah, we can look into that, but I just think, you know, that, yeah, it just still takes time.
No, I understand that, but I, I think that.
There's only one login and then they've got to let the DC DB crew is going to let one in at a time. Because it's really just running one meeting.
The only thing I, I would add about, I understand about Saturday, Sean. Uh, but uh, this is going to be a relatively short meeting compared to the other one. Does that make a difference if we have it in the evening, because it's a short meeting?
Well, yeah, the reason I suggest that also is because we already heard from Lori that some people have to take time off. Uh, if they're Saturday night, evening, maybe, maybe they don't have to take the time off.
Well, I then, I, I mean, then push come to shove, I mean, let's put it this way. Definitely not a Friday night, definitely not a Saturday or a Sunday night.
Yeah.
Monday night, um, the Monday night on the twenty-fourth, on the twenty-sixth, we don't meet, but other boards meet. Um, so the earliest I think we could either do will be Thursday, the twenty-second, or preferably. It would be Tuesday night, the twenty-seventh. That might be the best night.
See, I was still thinking Saturday, but do it.
Not Saturday night. Many people.
They go out Saturday, you never get.
No, no.
Ten o'clock's probably the right way to do it.
I'll be honest with you. I might not go out every Saturday night, but Saturday night, I just don't, I don't want to do anything. You know, I just want to be with my honey and that's it.
You don't want to, you don't want to risk turning it into a happy hour either.
Exactly. I mean, the other thing is, and if, if predicted that this meeting will be short, and I don't, and I have my doubts, but. Um. The um, the, the ten o'clock start would be um, it'd be done at eleven-thirty, quarter or twelve?
All right, so I'm going to reset my motion. I'll restate my motion that we make. That we hold um, via Zoom. The fall annual town meeting on Tuesday, October twenty-seventh at seven o'clock.
Well, what happened to the ten o'clock, didn't?
No, no, Tuesday night.
But what happened to do it Saturday morning at ten?
Um, I, everybody's thinking maybe the shorter, David just said, um.
No, I, 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 I'm, look, I'm, I'm not, I'm on the fence here only because of the fact. Do we get enough feedback about Saturday that was so overwhelmingly great that we want to stay on a Saturday, or is that really not the case?
I think we should be consistent. I mean, we're going to be all over the place, Saturday, Monday, Tuesday.
Right, guys, you know.
John?
Doing it on a third, uh, on a weekday night, will at least, will at least answer the question if it ever can be done on a Zoom on a weekday night. Try it.
I mean, I've always been, I've always been of the, of the school that. The, the spring town meeting, which is the more important town meet, wait a minute. Which is the most important town meeting because of the budget, should always be on a Saturday.
It's longer, agreed.
Have the maximum amount of people being able to uh, attend. Now, this one here, this town meeting was basically. The history was basically to do capital stuff in October. So that you would only do the budget in June and then see what you have and do the capital stuff in the fall. So, and we've added some other things in the, in now, uh, in total, so. This is the reasoning behind the, the two town meetings. So, I would say, you know, let's, let's, let's. Let's do the fall town meeting on a Tuesday. It doesn't necessarily have to be a Saturday. Um, but the most, the other one really should be on a Saturday. Um, so I, I think a Tuesday night at seven o'clock would be, that's more consistent. Because that's the time we would normally hold it.
Yep.
At seven PM?
Seven, yes.
Twenty, the twenty-seventh, is that correct?
Yes.
Did somebody second the motion?
I'll second it.
Okay. Any more discussion needed? Okay.
Um, question.
Okay, go ahead, David.
Sorry, um, I think it's a really important decision. Um, the, the capital items are going to be a handful, or is it going to be a long laundry list, Sean? Any way you can tell?
Uh, no, it won't be long.
Okay.
And nothing major.
Okay, so this is a one-hour meeting. Obviously, it can go forty-five minutes or an hour and ten minutes, but this is a one-hour meeting.
Yeah, there, there's no money, so the capital items.
With all due respect, with all due respect. Those of us who have been town meeting members for a long time, remember the time when the school budget first hit ten million dollars? Everybody was all up in arms and going crazy. Okay, and that they, that was going to be the hot button issue and, and no matter what happened. That passed in less than ten seconds.
Yeah.
That meeting took an hour and a half to talk about a hundred and twenty-five dollar outboard motor for the shellfish warden. That ended up having the shellfish warden take Kate Bullard out for a ride on, with to see if the motor was needed.
Well, it happened last meeting with the youth advocate. That turned into an hour discussion, that alone, so I, I understand what you're saying.
Right.
But I mean, in terms of the, the length and width, width and breadth of that, the, the town meeting, this is a short agenda.
It's a short agenda. That's the way to put it. Not a short meeting.
That's what I mean.
Okay.
One never knows.
The twenty-seventh at seven o'clock. Everybody clear?
Yep.
Okay, roll call, John?
Yes.
Sean?
Yes.
Stanley?
Yep, yes.
David?
Yes.
And me, yes. Okay.
All right. Great. And we'll start getting, uh, you know, the instructions together, we'll work with DCT. Operator, just to kind of go through the whole process we went through last time and. We'll uh, try and set up probably, well, we'll look at how many training sessions, at least one. We'll try to do two again, but I think uh, most of the.
Because you have some new town meeting members because of the election.
Right, right. So, but they were generally pretty good. I think people are getting good with Zoom, so hopefully the login goes quicker because people are more acclimated to using Zoom, so. Uh, we'll, we'll see.
Hopefully, yeah.
I think we were surprised, not surprised, but amazing to see how many people were right on it from.
I think it was great. I think it ran well.
The only issue was about signing up. Is there any way we can shorten up the, uh, put more people on to get them signed up? Really, that would be good.
It went a lot, I gotta admit, it went a lot better than I expected it was going to go.
Absolutely.
Yeah, we were one, one of only three towns in the whole state to do a, a remote, so that's, you know, that's a testament to Dartmouth's progress here.
That's right. Some people were sitting out on an athletic field, cold and swatting bugs and everything else, and, and we did it the modern way, so. Kudos to us.
Another first for the town of Dartmouth.
That's right. Okay, uh, item E, plastic bag by law resumes.
Yes, I just wanted to, uh, put this on the agenda so that, you know, the governor's order went into effect, um, in July, that, uh, plastic bag ban for the communities that had them was back into effect. Um, I just wanted to discuss this with the board. We'll send out notification to the businesses so that they're aware of it. Some may not be fully aware or, be aware but not adhering to it. So we'll contact them to let them know.
Question I had is whether we needed to remind people again, that's
Yeah, that's what we'll send a reminder. It was effective July tenth.
Yep.
Can we, I, I, I was noticing in the order that, uh, Newton's going to begin enforcement, uh, already began enforcement of Boston and Brooklyn are going to wait until October. Um, seeing that, uh, we're basically almost done with October, can we, uh, hold this off until November first? Give them at least thirty days notice.
We're almost done with September, not October. Don't rush it yet.
Well, no, no, no. Well, the date, we're, we're, well, yeah, we're almost halfway through September.
Right.
I, I would prefer to give the businesses thirty days notice. So, I, you know, I don't want to, and I hate enforcement in the middle of the month that we're going to begin October fifteenth or something like that.
I agree with Sean. I like November.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's like, let's put it this way. I mean, the times I've gone to start, the, the, one or two times I've gone to stop and shop, they're still, they're doing pla- they're doing, uh, brown bags. They're not doing plastic bags. You know, so I don't see too many places doing plastic bags now.
A little bit of everything. Time to figure out where, where they stand. That's, uh, that's what register you go to.
Yeah, really.
Yeah, so, uh, so Dave and I were really involved in this, um, this plastic bag by law and and, uh, I think we've done very well as a town, but we do owe, owe, owe the, uh, shop owners a bit of time. They might have bought some inventory. Um, I don't know that, but I'm sure most of the shop owners, um, realize that at some point that the plastic bag by law would come back. The big stores are all always first in line. They know what's going on. They're out of the plastic bag business. They're, they're into paper or whatever else. But, um, it, it's, uh, important that we give them a little bit of time before we start enforcing it. So I would think, um, November would be good.
So November, November first.
I think, in my, my, my view, November first would be, be fair and not saying that, uh, we haven't given them ample time. And I guess you, we'd have to, whatever date we set, that'll have to get up on the website shortly.
You will send them a notification letter.
Would you like a motion on that or are you, are you good with it?
I got a couple of comments. Uh, first, uh, enforcement, you know, uh, retailers can start anytime they want to using, not using plastic. So, you know, we're talking about simply enforcing the law.
Right.
So that it's, it's okay to do it effective immediately.
Right.
Okay, secondly is the governor has talked about reusable bags. And, uh, they allowing them back in because that was part of the program as well, I believe. And I think we need to be clear on that. As well on the note that, uh, do we wanna, um, do we want to, um, enable reusable bags to be used and, um, and when are we gonna, uh, is there any even enforcement mentioned in the, in the, uh, in the letter we sent out to the retailers?
I think that's
That's not in the bylaw.
I, I think, I think if you send a letter out saying that we're going to start enforcing the plastic, uh, bag by law effective November first, that reusable bags, um, as long as the state, you know, the reusable bags, uh, situation, uh, should follow state guidelines.
My understanding is that they are now, right, they are now, uh, uh, able to be used.
That's true. The, the study found out that the coronavirus does not travel on a, on a reusable bag, so that's
I mean, I would just, I would just refer to the state guidelines, that's all.
Well, I, I think it's worth mentioning to retailers that the state guidelines say you, that you can now allow reusable bags.
I think that's clear. I think that, I think that would be a good way to do it.
Well, they all should know about it. There's no question.
I, I, I think that a lot of people don't. I think it's be helpful to suchy smaller retailers to, to know what's going on.
Yeah.
Okay, back to my question, Mr. McGinnis, would you like a motion on this?
Uh, yes.
Uh, I'll make it.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Uh, roll call, John.
Can, uh, can we repeat the motion?
It was to, um, make the effective date of the, uh, enforcement of the plastic bag ban, uh, November first, Sunday, November first. Two thousand
What about, and what about?
And to make motion and to make mention of the state guidelines on reusable bags.
And this letter would go out when?
Uh, within the next week.
Okay.
But I, I put David's point is that we're saying that, excuse me, wh- while to, to the, to the owner or the, the manager or whatever, wh- while you could start using the, the, the non, 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 non-plastic bags anytime. The requirement is that you do it by November first.
Right. Yeah.
I think we, we should, however, we should encourage people to go to stop using plastic bags as soon as possible. However, it will be enforced, uh, effective November first.
Right.
I mean, it's amazing how many thousands of bags you can use if you're not careful or, or, or you maintain the program. Our interest here is to save plastic bags.
Well, I know one restaurant that got, uh, they were able to go through their, their last of the inventory of the plastic bags during this time.
Well, they're, they're exempt, Sean.
Well, not, no, this was a big restaurant.
A big restaurant, okay.
I think everybody does the right thing. Um, you get a handful of people that are will thumb their nose up and it, uh, it's something like this and do what they want.
Everybody, everybody that I visited were doing it.
Yep, yep, me and me also.
Could you, uh, the interest of my, my, my understanding, could you restate the motion, Sean?
Yeah, you're gonna make me think. Thank you. I'll remember that, David. That we send a letter to all the businesses that, uh, regarding, that are affected by the plastic band use, that the town will begin enforcement of the plastic bands on Sunday, November first. Um, and that to remind the, the plate, the establishments that even though, um, the enforcement begins, uh, November first, that, uh, if they choose to, uh, start, uh, if they do the self-ban themselves, uh, we encourage them to, uh, to go ahead and do that and also to remind them, um, to, to be aware of the state guidelines regarding reusable bags.
Well, that's an awful lot.
No kidding.
I'm impressed.
Okay, I don't think I don't believe we voted on this, so.
I'm at the vote, the quality of the motion.
Yeah. Okay, roll call, John.
Yes.
Okay, Sean.
Yes.
Stanley.
Yes.
David.
Yes.
And myself, yes. Okay, I knew we'd get through that. It was in the bag.
It gets worse.
Okay, item G, uh, Dartmouth Community Preservation Housing Rehab Program Recapture Agreement Amendments. This was, uh, brought up by something that John had sent to me and I asked Mr. McGinnis to look into it. Uh, and I guess Anthony came back with something which was, uh, legalese and, uh, glad Brian's here because legalese confuses the hell out of me. Uh, I don't know if you, Mr. McGinnis, would you like to state what the problem was or?
Uh, sure. So, you know, part of the agreement that, uh, the residents sign, uh, as part of this program is to, uh, if they, if there's previously, if there was another lien holder, if they took out another mortgage, uh, they were responsible to pay back the loan. Um, you know, the issue came up with the reverse mortgages, uh, and how to handle that. Is that a mortgage? Is that a lien? So, um, in working with town council, um, you can see in your packet, there's some highlighted language that they added to allow for, um, members of this program to have a reverse mortgage, but still have the town, uh, as a primary lien holder to recoup the money as part of the, the loan.
Okay, so that, 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 that was exactly my question. I wanted to make sure of that. So the town gets paid before the bank has any say. Is that correct?
That, that is correct. Um, we would still be the first recorded, i- if, if there is a mortgage of any kind on the property and they come to us for a recapture agreement, um, my understanding is we typically don't provide it, that we need to be the first lien holder on the property. So that shouldn't impact things. Um, typically, reverse mortgage entities want to be the first lien holder, but if one's willing to be the second lien holder, then I mean, that's, that's their concern.
I would think so. I understand that. That's, that's why it's clear to me. I wonder, because I know, I know, except for government, if he's like the IRS and stuff, banks are always listed first.
And a contract is a contract.
Right.
They signed the contract and, um, there's no way out of it.
Okay.
So, and so, and so to, to take into account the concerns about that, in addition to the revised language in the, the recapture agreement itself, for any existing agreements that would want to be amended to include this provision, it makes clear that in, in the amendment agreement, it makes clear that the amendment allowing this has to be recorded before the reverse mortgage is recorded. Or, so that the lien doesn't get recorded before the amendment and no argument could be made that the lien, the bank is then somehow first in line ahead of the recapture agreement since we amended it. Um, so it specifically says that if they attempt to record the reverse mortgage before recording the amendment to the recapture agreement, then their existing recapture agreement, um, is in breach and the immediate repayment provision is triggered. Um, just to again, make sure that we are first in line. And that would obviously only apply to ones that already have been, uh, have their recapture agreements on their house and are trying to be modified as opposed to, uh, the original, uh, recapture agreement having the new language in it from the beginning.
Yep. Some of them caused this. We had someone that received a grant from the town, uh, a while back. They, they would like to get a reverse mortgage for the house. They have no intention of leaving the house. They plan on living, living there forever until they die. Uh, but with the prior agreement, they would have had to pay off the loan for the town, which was about, I think thirteen thousand five hundred roughly, I think, would have had to pay off that money to the town before they were, before they were able to get their reverse mortgage. This allows them to not have to do that. That, that, that's the intent. It's to help someone, a constituent that wants to get a reverse mortgage, but doesn't want to have to pay off the loan right now for financial reasons, obviously.
So, uh, when would the town be, uh, remunerated?
Assuming none of the triggers for breach occur, uh, these agreements essentially, the payment, payback occurs when they transfer the property, whether that's on, uh, when they move or upon, uh, you know, their estate doing something with it. Um, so the town doesn't get paid until the, they don't directly own the home anymore.
John?
The, the town still gets paid in the same fashion it did before the, before the reverse mortgage. So that's, you know, upon death, upon, um, moving or selling the home. But that we only have four or five of these particular loans in the town. Only four or five grants were given out. So we're not talking about a lot of things, but we're talking about a, a situation that needs remedy for some person. Elderly people like to stay in their homes and this is an avenue for one particular person to stay in their home.
Any more questions? What's the board's pleasure?
I'm moved.
Okay, and I'm sorry, who's second? Stanley?
I did.
I didn't.
Okay, no, it's up, 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 Sean.
All right, well, he's here to me, so.
Oh, he's there for me. That's, that the point, it confuses me sometimes because I wonder who the hell you're pointing at. Yeah.
Patriot coach.
Yeah. All right, we have a motion in a second. So, roll call, John?
Yes.
Sean?
Yes.
Stanley?
No.
Okay, David?
Yeah.
And I will vote yes. So it's four to one.
So just, uh, so this will be the new contract moving forward. So what we'll do is we'll contact the people with the existing contracts and give them the option for this amendment. Um, just because now this is the contract. Uh, so if they want to take advantage of it, they, they can and they can record it as attorney Cruz was saying, if not, if they want to keep what, what they have it, that's fine too.
Uh, and Sean, I recommend doing that in writing and requiring them to respond in writing and by a certain date. And if they don't, then we're off the hook.
Yeah, okay.
All right, item H, China Bell Non-Renewal Twenty Twenty Liquor License, Mr. McGinnis.
I'm sorry, Sean, am I all set? Do you need me? Am I good?
Yeah, one thing, uh, Brian, so the fishing pier, just so, uh, you can attest to every week when this comes up and I say we contact the state and they say next week and they never come through next week. So you, you can just provide a little bit of information if the board
So, I, I, I can give you a part of the saga, which will become epic in memory once recorded. Um, so the state, basically after, after the bureaucrats and Deb had agreed on mostly on language, their attorney stepped in and said, we don't like any of this. And we said, okay, then why weren't you involved in the first place? And so they made us start over and I've been with them now back and forth over a number of months. They take forever to respond back. Um, mostly because I keep asking questions about this program. They don't actually have answers to, including liability and they finally admitted that they would own the structure, um, that it's theirs. And then now I'm asking questions about liability in terms of people get injured on it. If it's not our structure, what happens? Um, and, and things like that. So, um, basically, they have not been very forthcoming with information and I think a lot of it's because they don't really have good answers. But I am slowly getting answers out of them. Um, once I am comfortable with the answers relating to legal liability and the actual structure of how this would work in terms of funding and also in terms of, um, whether or not they need us to give them a lease in order to operate on the property. Uh, it seems now that they would either need a lease or they would need an easement. And I don't feel give comfortable getting them an easement. So we'd be looking at a long-term lease. Um, so there's a, there's a lot about this, this program that seems in the past, they basically waved away with vagaries and now other towns are experiencing issues. So I just want to make sure that we understand all the potential complications. The biggest thing coming out of this is that for the first time, they say they've done that with one other municipality already, but basically this is the first time that they may be requiring the municipality to pay some of the cost. Uh, if we go above a million on this, they would be requiring us to per se pay a percentage. Um, so that's not how this program used to work in the past and that creates a lot of legal complications, not least of which is if we're paying for some of the structure, but they say they own it, are we basically giving the state money? Um, and are we allowed to do that? And they don't have a clear answer on it because they've never done this before. So that, that's kind of where we are right now.
If they own it, doesn't that make them responsible for maintenance too?
Well, yes, but they say they're only responsible if they have funding. So then my question was, okay, are we responsible if you don't have funding? Or does it go derelict? And they don't have an answer for that either. So, this is, this is where it's at right now.
Don't go out and buy any fishing poles.
Clean the bathrooms, the maritime
Yeah, so they just, they, there's a lot of, oh, this is, this always works this way. It's fine with not any substantive answers about what happens if something goes wrong on a, on a million dollar structure that technically we won't own, but we'll be responsible for. Um, so I want to make sure the select board has all of the answers to those questions before we, we move forward. And as I said, I am slowly getting them. Um, but I, I want you to have those answers so you know full well what we would be agreeing to before we find out after the fact about what's happening.
We appreciate that very much.
I have a, uh, one comment. Uh, is the waterways committee a breast of this whole situation?
Well, I mean, with this, yes, that when it comes up, when I hear from them, I inform them and then on, for every meeting, they get an update on this. Because under the old business, so yes.
And unfortunately, the update is, we just, they, they, we don't have all the answers yet and we don't have a, we don't even have a draft that'd be comfortable providing to you or the waterways commission without, without being able to give you these answers. Um, and that, that's just kind of where we are at this point. One thing I also did finally get out of them as well is, um, they would be using federal funding for the money they would be spending in part. And that would tie in the town to federal obligations, even though we aren't the grant recipient directly. Um, so that would actually potentially limit future options about how the property could be used as, you know, because technically under the regulations from the state, even though it's a fishing pier, you can ask them for permission to use it for like other things on a temporary case by case basis and they can grant permits for that. But if you use federal money, you can't get that because the federal government will say you can only use this for the thing you got the grant for. So technically it's not our grant, but they would be binding us indirectly. So I, I finally got them to admit that they would be using federal funding, which would have implications on what we can do within the future as well. So that may not be possible, for example, if, with federal funding. So that, that, that's the thing you have to, federal funding may actually bind us to, you literally can only ever use this for fishing. Um, forever and ever and ever. Um, so that, that's something you'll have to think about and that's one of the answers we finally just got back about a week and a half ago. So, um, I want to have all the answers for you before you guys make a full decision on it.
It's, it's a good thing that the current rules with the, uh, fishy folks lined up at, uh, eight fifty-five, waiting to run onto the bridge at nine o'clock is working well because this is certainly going to take a while.
Not in my lifetime.
So, so if, if you're ever, if you were the waterways commissioners ever asking Sean what's going with it, it's, it is in my court and I am doing the best I can with it, but it is mostly the state taking a long time to get back on these questions I've been asking.
We, we could have the train stop at the fishing pier when it's all coming in.
With, with the million dollar bathroom.
Thanks, Brian. Appreciate it.
Not a problem.
Thank you very much.
All right, have a good night. All right, have a good night, guys.
Nice job, man.
Okay, back to China Bell Non-Renewal Twenty Twenty Liquor License.
Right, they were issued a license for uh this current year. They've never come to pick it up. It's come to our attention that the restaurant is closed. So we're just notifying them in the A B C C that uh that's they're not going to be renewed for next year. Um, you know, if something changes, they can apply, but um I don't think that's going to happen.
Okay, item I, Green Communities Grant?
Uh, yes, this is just notification that the town received its maximum amount in Green Communities Grant Funding, two hundred thousand dollars. Uh, you can see the projects listed on there. Uh, we've had a great contribution um from our energy manager, Kathy Stanley. She, you know, has been phenomenal and really kind of helping us with these grants, but not only that, but sparing the products, well as Cody had at, he had helped out as well um to kind of transfer uh where we were at over to Kathy in the past. Um, you know, the the town has been a member of the Green Communities for a few years now. It's been very successful. We've got a lot of grant dollars. Uh, so much so that I was contacted by the uh Office of Energy and Environmental Affairs last week that they are going to be in town Thursday. Uh, the Secretary of Energy um and Environmental Affairs Kathleen Thieritis, as well as Lieutenant Governor Karen Polito are going to be uh at Dias Landing at the Bucket, because that was one of our locations where we're doing weatherization and they want to have a small ceremony um to celebrate uh Dartmouth's commitment to the Green Communities Program and its success with its grants. Um, they just notified me, asking me Friday if they they could come this week, and we're going back and forth this week. They weren't sure, so it looks like Thursday. I will put out the official notification uh tomorrow. Once we finalize it, I just got an email tonight. Um, so that's exciting. So I'll let all of you know um to show up and be there uh to kind of bask in uh the success of the town's Green Community Program. Uh, they anticipate it's just a very small gathering. They're not doing anything big. Uh, but they just want to come to town to recognize Dartmouth, so that's great, great news.
Sean, use Sean, use your connections with the state and make sure uh tell uh Karen that she's buying ice cream when she comes.
The bucket's closed.
So Sean, do you want to list the the amounts of money and where it's going?
Oh, sure. Um.
Sean, before you start, the Oxford Creamery, that may that maybe that's an old name, I believe.
Yes, so that that is that is the bucket, but uh the middle school, it's a hundred twenty-three thousand five hundred eighty-one for a steam and hot water uh heating system conversion, uh thirty-two thousand two hundred eighty-nine uh dollars for the Smith Neck Recreation Center LED lighting. A hundred and twenty-three thousand five hundred eighty-one, uh oh, for the middle school, that's a repeat, sorry about that. Uh uh eighteen thousand one hundred six for uh uh D C T V for LED lighting, uh four thousand two hundred fifty-six for the uh the Smith Neck Recreation Center, weatherization. Uh, they bucket four hundred thousand eight hundred sixty-four for weatherization uh as well as more for the D C T V ten thousand five hundred eighty, and then the Council on Aging, six thousand three hundred and twenty-four, so.
It's great.
That's the maximum we're allowed to get under the Green Communities Program, so we're maximizing that relationship. So it's been really great.
Yeah, but clearly there's a lot of redundancy there, otherwise they'd be owing us more money than.
Yeah, that'd be nice.
Okay, uh, J, item J, S R T A, pick a representative and a designate.
Correct, so uh this is an annual appointment uh last year. Uh Chairman Gracie, you were the representative.
Not true. I've never been a representative for that.
Oh, their records indicate otherwise, but um so if if the board wants to uh appoint a representative and uh last year was uh the designee was uh Deb Wender. Um, so we can appoint either myself or the interim Director of Development Cody Hadad. Uh, I think he'd be a good uh for this position.
That's my motion to appoint Cody Hadad as the designate.
Yep, Frank, you can only vote once on this.
Yeah, but we need to, don't we need to pick two people?
Well, you need a re- a select select board representative and then a designate, which would be Cody, so select board members.
But but if you read the the thing, it does, it says the representative, the select board can pick someone.
Oh, you can pick someone other than a select board member, but.
Well, we just made a motion.
You still need two.
Right, um, well, at least that's the first um representative.
Or the de- or the designate.
All right, you know something? All right, I will draw my motion. Make a motion that we we appoint as our representative Cody Hadad and the designate would be Sean McInnis. So that way Cody goes first. If Cody can't make it, Sean can go.
Okay. I I I think the reason I ended up here is because the default is to pick the select board chair to be the representative, so while I wasn't in the past because I'm chairman now, I think that's how they picked me.
Who knows?
I default.
Right. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Uh, okay, uh, roll call, John?
Yes.
Uh, Sean?
Yes.
Stanley?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Be yes. Okay, we're good with that. Okay, old business.
All right, uh, so Bliss Corner, no new updates, uh, a COVID nineteen update, you know, just we're waiting on it's business as usual. We're open. Um, as I mentioned earlier, some offices that are small are by appointment only, but uh the the offices, uh, the town hall, town offices are open to the general public. Uh, when speaking with the library director today, she hopes to have uh the building, the libraries open in some capacity uh within a month. Um, they're still making preparations, but they're very busy. Um, and uh other than that, we're waiting on the governor's, any change to the governor's orders. Um, he hasn't really made any. Uh, we've been working with the school on their reopening plan. Um, trying to coordinate a joint meeting with the school committee to give the select board just an update of on their opening plan. You've heard about it, you've read about it in the media, but I thought it'd be helpful if they came in and I just provided an update to the board directly, so.
I believe online starts tomorrow.
Yes, online and then October first, they start phasing in uh the remote learning and onsite.
Where do we stand with the uh sign for the library?
Uh, Z B A, the the Z B A was either last week or this week.
And then we're gonna have to order it, and then we order it?
Well, I mean, it's gonna be approved, so you why order it unless it's approved?
So we can't get in before the first snowfall, right?
What's that, the sign?
Yeah.
Oh, the sign will be up.
I'm just kidding.
That's COVID in the fishing pier. You got the update from Attorney Cruz, so you can see that that is a slog of a process, but it's still moving forward, which is good.
He was really glad he was here.
Yeah, I always feel like I have should have information on it. We check in every week, so it's good to somebody else that it's, you know.
Yep. Okay, uh, minutes, August tenth, August fourteenth, and August twenty-fourth. And again, I suggest we do those separately because David's not here for one of them. I think the twenty-fourth.
Right.
I'll make a motion that we um approve August tenth and August fourteenth.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, we have a motion in a second for August tenth and August fourteenth. Uh, John?
Yes.
Sean?
Yes.
Stanley?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
And me, yes, okay?
I have one question. Um, part of those minutes were the um advertising for the um Youth Commission position. I know that was about it was within thirty days. There were any, I know it's things, you got a lot of things going on. Any any progress on that one, Sean?
We're gonna post that uh by the end of next week. We talked about that.
Thank you.
Make a motion that we accept the minutes of August twenty-fourth.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Roll call, John?
Yes.
Stanley?
Yes.
Sean?
Yes.
And myself, yes.
I'm staying.
Chairman Gracie also, uh, I don't know if you want to uh take a motion for me to sign the warrants, the payroll and and.
It's almost.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. John?
Yes.
Uh, Sean?
Yes.
Stanley?
Yes.
And David?
Yes.
And me, yes. Stamp away.
All right.
Okay.
We had some road, we had some road work we want to announce.
I just say post it on the website.
Um, that's what I was.
Grab these and post it on the social media.
Okay.
I'll post it on my uh Facebook page, my select board page, Facebook page.
I have a question in that regard, and I know there's probably not a lot of control, but I notice like in the Bliss Corner area going down Cove, uh, the entire area is like cordoned off. And I know we don't have a lot of saying that, I suppose, but it's like if they're going to work on a section, they seem to want to like close the entire road. The Cove Cove Road is closed all the way down to the turnaround. Uh, and I know that's the case anywhere else in town, but I I suppose we don't have a lot to say about that.
Uh, well, I think it's a it's a cost saving measure as well, so when they close a road like that, they don't need to hire police details. So they they try to be as economical as possible.
I mean, it's much better, it's much better to redo the road when you get the whole road available instead of half, and then you gotta move and shift the equipment over to the other half. And and once you put the road down, it's not good to have people drive on it right away. Give it some time to set up.
Yeah, I'm glad I don't live anymore, never get home.
Thank you.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Here we have a motion and a second to adjourn. Uh, John?
Yes.
Sean?
Yes.
Stanley?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
And me, yes. We are adjourned.